Hey Mark, great speech yesterday.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
It was very good. It was really good.
I got help from Nick. Thanks Nick. Nick helped.
And my apologies.
Usually Nick needs lots of help.
I planned on attending and I got completely confused between the pride flag raising and the Métis flag raising. I thought they were both online. So I was sitting in my home getting ready and saw that it was not online. So I'm sorry. Sorry I missed it.
There were three events yesterday.
Oh crap. Oh yes, and the vigil.
Yeah.
Oh, how did that go?
I think it was a very somber event. There were lots of other faith leaders there. Our police chief spoke. He spoke very well.
Oh, yeah.
So I generally, very good support from the community, but a difficult situation. And certainly our Muslim community, Islamic community is, there are people who feel very threatened. So any supports we can continue to provide would be appreciated. Set to go? Good afternoon. Welcome to the Lethbridge City Council meeting for Tuesday, June the 15th, 2021. I'm going to begin with the reconciliation statement. The city of Lethbridge acknowledges that we are gathered on the lands of the Blackfoot people of the Canadian Plains and pays respect to the Blackfoot people, past, present, and future, while recognizing and respecting their cultural heritage, beliefs, and relationship to the land. The city of Lethbridge is also home to the Métis Nation of Alberta, Region 3. We'll now move on to bouquets. Deputy Mayor Campbell?
Oh, thank you, your worship. I just wanted to just congratulate Team Canada winning the World Hockey Championships as we, as we all know, if you've lived in Lethbridge for any, any length of time, 1951, 70 years ago was when the Lethbridge Maple Leafs went to the world championships and brought home a gold medal. And so our Team Canada, and I'm, I was the one that didn't believe they could do it because they were down on three games. They lost three games. I didn't think we had, we had it in us. Well, I shouldn't say we, that they had it in us. They were in a bubble and they beat, they beat everybody they had to and ultimately they won the gold medal. But I bring this up because one of the guys, assistant coach Mike Dick, from Lethbridge. So he, he adds his list of the names like Billy Gibson, and I'm sure Billy Gibson is smiling down on Team Canada as they won a gold medal. So I wanted to congratulate that them and Michael Dick, who of course coached with the Lethbridge Hurricanes. So yay, Canada. Thanks.
Thank you. Acting Mayor Croson?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. I just wanted to give a kudos to the Target Hunger, the volunteers and all the donors. I know they brought in much more than they were hoping to get, which is amazing for our community. So thank you to everyone who filled their yellow bags and put them out and to everybody who collected them.
Thank you. Councillor Carlson?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. Just a huge shout out to our community as we're slowly opening up through the pandemic as people are following regulations and getting their vaccines. So congratulations to everyone, but people are still taking a lot of the great precautions that are necessary right now. So just kudos to all of you that are doing such a great job of keeping us all, your neighbors, your friends, your families safe. So thank you for that. Also a big shout out to yourself, your worship. Councillor Campbell, our Métis community for the flag raising yesterday that I had mis-scheduled in my calendar. So I missed the actual event, but I hear you both did an excellent job representing us. So thank you for that, as well as you, Mayor Spearman, for attending the pride flag raising yesterday evening. Much appreciated. Our community is slowly opening up, but we're still taking a lot of great precautions. Thanks for everyone.
Thank you. Councillor Morrow?
Nothing. Thank you.
Councillor Miyashiro?
Um, one second, Mayor Spearman. Can't keep my mic. Oh, here we go. I'd just like to acknowledge that today is World Elder Abuse Awareness Day and the theme for this year is Grow the Conversation. World Elder Abuse Awareness Day, or WIA, is marked each year on June 15th. It's an official United Nations International Day acknowledging the significance of elder abuse as a public health and human rights issue. Since 2006, communities throughout the country and around the world have honored this day to raise the visibility of elder abuse by organizing events to share information and promote resources and services that can help increase senior safety and wellbeing. In our area, the Lethbridge Elder Abuse Response Network is a collaboration of human services organizations that respond to and provide education, awareness, and advocacy for those at risk of or already experiencing abuse, as well as the community at large. The network consists of a full-time case manager, a part-time coordinator, steering committee made up of representatives from Alberta Health Services, Lethbridge Police Services, LSCO in the city of Lethbridge, as well as representatives from 29 human support service agencies. As part of WIA this year, if you go to the LSCO's YouTube channel or Facebook page, there's an in-depth discussion about how to identify elder abuse in our aging population.
Thank you. Councillor Higgin?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. I just want to let the community be aware, I'm sure they've seen it on social media, that tonight is the Lethbridge Police Service Virtual Town Hall meeting from 7:00 to 8:30. They'll be discussing things like crime trends and what the LPS is doing to combat crime and how the community can help partner with them. And we also be able to ask questions. That's this evening from 7:00 till 8:30.
Thank you for that important engagement meeting. Councillor Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to remind the community, of course, safety is very important, but river is quite fast this time of year, lots of spring runoff. And just be mindful to be very safe if you are going in the river. I know the weather's been very, very warm, but never underestimate the power of mother nature, especially the river. And just pray, please be cautious. That's all I'm asking during this summer time. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that timely reminder. Councillor Kaufman?
Nothing, Mayor Spearman. Thank you.
Councillor Carlson, did you have something else to add? I see your name is back in the queue.
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. I'm not sure if you were going to mention anything, but hearing Councillor Miyashiro talk about Elder Abuse Awareness Week, I wanted to pass on our congratulations to age-friendly Lethbridge, which is chaired by Councillor Miyashiro. We got a recent notification from Minister Pahn congratulating us on our, our status and our commitment to becoming an age-friendly community. And I know that Councillor Miyashiro and his age-friendly Lethbridge team have done, I want to say most of the work, I'm going to say all of the work on that.
All of the work. Just so you know, we're waiting for a video from Minister Pahn before we do the presentation of the certificate.
Awesome. Thank you.
We look forward to a public event to celebrate that.
Yes.
We do congratulate Councillor Miyashiro in his capacity as the executive director at LSCO for the leadership he's shown and for the recognition that has been given for his efforts and those of his team. Thank you. I would just simply like to say I did attend the vigil last night with the Islamic community. And certainly the tragedy that happened in London, Ontario is one that could happen in other places. We would hope that it would never happen in Lethbridge, but we've seen it before in Quebec City and other communities around the world where it was never anticipated and things like this do happen. And of course, the message is always, Lethbridge is a welcoming city. We always want people to come here and feel safe and protected. And we always, we want people of all beliefs, of all origins, refugees, immigrants, indigenous people, to feel that Lethbridge is a safe place. We want everyone to live in cohesion and happiness, and we want to promote Lethbridge as a healthy city where people can succeed. So in terms of the gateway to opportunity, it means a gateway to hope, a gateway to having a home, having an education, having a career. And we welcome everyone and we hope that they will feel safe. And I commend our police chief and our other faith leaders in the community, organizations from Lethbridge Family Services, who all offered their support at the vigil last night to the Islamic community in Lethbridge, saying, "You are welcome here. We will support you as a community." And I hope council shares those views, that we will continue to support people of all faiths who come to our city. Thank you. With that, if we can move on to the consent agenda. I have a resolution from the deputy mayor, Ms. Councillor Campbell. Be it resolved that the minutes of the regular meeting of city council held on Tuesday, June the 1st, 2021 be approved and the mayor and the city clerk be authorized to sign the same. And further be it resolved that the minutes of the public hearing held on Tuesday, June 1st, 2021 be approved and the mayor and the city clerk be authorized to sign the same. And further be it resolved that city council receive for information the status of directed resolutions, June 15th, 2021. And further be it resolved that city council adopt the recommendations contained in the following standing policy committee reports. The monthly update on operational review and monthly council work plan update. Deputy Mayor Campbell?
Thank you, your worship. I'll open this up for my colleagues if there are any questions.
Are there any questions from council? I see none.
Then I will call for the question.
Okay, the question has been called. All in favor? Are any opposed? I see none. That is unanimous. Okay, and now have a resolution from Acting Mayor Croson, adoption of the agenda. That the agenda of the regular meeting of city council on June the 15th, 21 be adopted as presented, including all communications as submitted by the city clerk. City clerk, are there any amendments?
Yes, your worship. There is one amendment to the agenda. Administration, with the approval of the city manager, has requested that closed item 10.2. That's land matter number two be withdrawn from the agenda.
You. So we'll now change that resolution to that the agenda of the regular meeting of the city council on June the 15th, 2021 be adopted as amended, including all communications as submitted by the city clerk. Acting Mayor Croson?
I'll call for the question.
Question has been called. All in favor? Are any opposed? I see none. That is unanimous. Okay, there are no presentations today. We'll move straight to submissions. I have a submission from Deputy Mayor Campbell. Festival Square, Market Plaza, CIP D44 Construction Tender Update. Be it resolved that city council, one, approve the funding strategy for the Festival Square Market Plaza, allocating an additional $485,000 from previously approved funding sources as proposed in the submission. And, two, direct the city manager to proceed to construction of the project. Deputy Mayor Campbell?
Thank you, your worship. This is a, this was approved with the city council when we got $900,000 from the provincial government for stimulus funding for Festival Square downtown. It's a, it's a great project and we found out that during the bid process, it's costing more than was anticipated. I guess they needed more lumber. And so, but the gist of this is that we, we're asking, or Andrew Malcolm is here as well for any questions, but to approve the funding strategy because we have the money in place. This is not a new ask for money, it's just a reallocation. We don't, if we don't go through with this on time, we will lose the $900,000 stimulus funding that was presented to us. So if there are some questions, as I said, that Andrew Malcolm is here to answer those questions.
Hey, questions from council? I'm going to start with Councillor Kaufman.
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. Question, the city manager designate, is there a operating cost associated with Festival Square?
I'll ask Mr. Malcolm to, to address that, please.
Thank you. So there likely is to be a slight operating cost to the ongoing maintenance and programming of the space, but that would be absorbed through the Downtown Redevelopment Fund, which is, you know, funds that we would leverage for the Clean Sweep program and our regular programming through the Heart of Our City Activity Grant. So there's no new additional ask for funding as it relates. It's just a repurposing or a retargeting of existing money to a concentrated space.
Okay, but we could be allocating those funds even to something else. The reason I ask is it's not identified as a risk if we go ahead with the project. So that was the first question. The second question, this was one of a couple of projects that was identified as being possible for the funding. What were the other projects and why are we choosing to increase the scope of this instead of looking at other projects?
Sorry, my internet connection's a little off, but I think I caught the gist of that question, Councillor Kaufman. The first, to the first part on the operating, you know, our funds for like the Clean Sweep program, they are sweeping and taking care of the streets. This is more or less an extension of the street to just be, you know, adding on to their responsibility to pay specific attention to this area. As it relates to the pulling of funding from those other sources, it's just around the opportunity. When, when infrastructure projects from those other sources go forward, they typically don't come to council to say that we're replacing a water main on 7th Street to that level of detail. What we wanted to do here is be transparent with council because we are targeting several efforts at one location. And when the procurement comes through, it would be noticeable that the project cost was well above the 900,000, which would have been the number council would have been privy to. So that's the best that I can answer that question from what I caught. And if I miss something there, I might rely on Ms. Trent or Mr. Hawkins to jump in and top that up.
Yeah, thank you. The part of the question that I asked is, we were, council was provided with a list of, I think it was three projects. This was the project we chose. Is there a reason why we're not looking at the other two projects with the funding that was provided?
I'm not, I'm going to have maybe, yeah, I'm not, I'm looking at maybe Mr. Dalton or others on that one. The other projects I do not believe have come in under budget like this one had. So I believe the other projects are continuing forward.
If I understand, Councillor Kaufman, you're, you're highlighting the fact that there were two other projects that were not pursued and this one was. And whether or not we considered, when the cost overruns became apparent here, reconsider those other projects? Is that the?
Thank you. That's it exactly.
Is there anybody that can speak to that? Was that part of the thought process?
That, Mr. Dalton, that wasn't considered as part of the process. We were looking at Festival Square in isolation, understanding that there was an overrun and trying to assess our ability to manage it accordingly. So if that is council's wish for us to reevaluate all projects fulsome, on a fulsome basis, that's certainly something we can undertake as part of this review.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Spearman.
Councillor Carlson?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. A quick question. We're, we're, we've got some other funding sources here to make up the shortfall. Water, wastewater, lane rehab, community lighting, public realm. Those budgets are usually set for specific things as they come up. Is there anything being pushed off that we should be aware of when we reallocate these funds to this project? I'm not sure.
Councillor Carlson, no, there is nothing that is being pushed off as, as it relates to these items. The, the community lighting was actually originally funded in this manner. We then tried to leverage this project to actually give a cost savings and now we've resorted back to the original model. The lane rehab and the water wastewater, you know, probably Doug Hawkins can speak better to this, but it's, it's a fund that, that is available for when breaks and maintenance and opportunities come up, which is very much what this instance is. It's likely just, we haven't waited for a break. We're being proactive in that regard. And then the public realm, the D24 CIP was very much about, again, opportunistic investments in the public realm. And if we had not received the, the 900,000 from the province, there was probably going to be an approach or a strategy to try and leverage that funding to try and do some of these improvements anyways. Again, the 900,000 came a little bit over the wall at us at the end of last year. It was an opportunity. And so we were in a position where we hadn't done as much detailed but planning or budgeting at that point in time. And so that's really the, the gist of, one of the reasons why the 900,000 is not enough today is that we hadn't completed enough detail at that point in time.
Okay, thank you. So there's nothing that is going to be put off to a later time to fund this. Appreciate that. And the additional infrastructure that's needed, the lane rehab, the water sewer, community lighting, et cetera, those are, those are things that are necessary. But doing them at this time is actually probably going to be a cost savings initiative. Is that correct?
Yeah, I would highlight that the water, the wastewater, the lane rehab and the community lighting are all critical aspects that would be happening in the, in the next, you know, probably five years anyways, five to 10 years, depending on the, the quality of the infrastructure. The public realm piece is really the piece that is probably more aesthetic in nature than it is functional. But as it relates to creating a space that is safe and attractive for people to generate that economic activity that was sold as part of the project, we believe it's critical in that nature, just not, you know, maybe as pure as, as infrastructure related.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Spearman.
Thank you. Acting Mayor Croson?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. Remind me with the municipal spending program, the money from the province, did we have to submit our projects where and they had to approve each project? Or did we get a blanket amount of money that we can apply to projects under our need? Can anyone remind me on that?
I might defer the details to Mr. Dalton or designate, but we, we did review a number of projects. I believe almost 30 administratively. Some were brought, I think three were brought forward to council for recommendation. Council endorsed those and then that was submitted to the province for them to then issue an approval, which I believe they supported all that were passed along.
That's my recollection as well. I'm not sure, Mr. Jared, if that's, if you have anything to add.
So the Lethbridge's allocation was about $12 million. And we also amended the Lethbridge Airport for $11 million.
If we are then to change our, like to, for a different project, do we have to resubmit and get permission from the province again to move ahead? Is where I'm actually heading on that question?
Yes, I would think so.
Yes.
Okay. And was I, again, looking back last fall, what's the deadline on construction of this one? I think most of the province ones need to be done relatively quickly, if I'm remembering.
Yeah, these grants had a date for expenditure by December 31st of 2021.
So if we, if we had to reapply to the province, we'd have to build in time if we were to go with a different project or we risk losing the money? Okay. Thank you.
Councillor Higgin?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. A question I have is, is if I'm looking at and understanding this correctly, this, this budget was over, over 50% over what was budget? Does that, does that sound right? Festival Square, is that 900, or was it 900,000 that we got for the, the grant? That was to cover the whole project, we thought, first of all, but we went over 485,000? Okay, I guess my question is, is, can the scope of this project be changed? I mean, it'd be great to have, have the gold, but if we have to go for the silver or bronze, is, is that something that could be done to still fit in line with that funding?
Thanks for the question, Councillor Higgin. So throughout this process, from going through the detailed design, very early it was apparent that we were going to be running over budget. And so we began scaling back features that we thought we could without being a detriment to the overall outcomes of the project. We believe we're probably at the silver, bronze standard right now. And if we pull back any further, we feel like we won't be able to deliver a project that meets the projected outcomes. And that's why we identified in the options that if we are not successful in this budget allocation, that we should simply return the 900,000 because the project would likely not be able to be delivered to the standard that we've, we've basically built up with the community and with the province of Alberta.
We also talked about other projects that were submitted that could be used. But I guess, hearing what you said, Mr. Malcolm, it says, I, I see that you, you knew right away, you were saying back in December that it looked like the project was going to be over. My concern, I guess my question is, it's coming to council in the middle of June. Is there a reason why it couldn't have been brought forth? We look at this prior to getting hit when this, when this money has to be spent from the province. I'm just, you're saying early on, so I'm saying probably December, January, you knew this. I'm just curious why it didn't come to council at that time?
So the, the detailed design process started in January. So when I reflect to early on, that was in mid-February to March. We still were strongly of the belief that there would be some strong cost efficiencies realized with the Third Avenue Reconstruction Project. And so we felt comfortable that by putting it out to bid, we would be able to understand what that true additional cost would be. And that's where we sit today as the bid closed two weeks ago. In hindsight, we probably could have come forward as soon as we had an inclination of, of the budget being over in, in late March, which would have potentially bought us two months' time. But we, we were of the belief as a project team that the, the construction bid would have had enough synergies with Third Avenue to, to be much closer than, than what we see.
Great. Thank you. I have more questions, but I'll hop out for now, Mayor Spearman. Thank you.
Thank you. So this is one of three catalytic projects that we got funded for. So catalytic mean generating additional economic activity by investing in this, this type of a project. That's correct? Is that viewed to be catalytic? And I guess what I'm hearing from the private sector and everybody is, as the economy openings, is opening up, we're seeing unprecedented inflation, we're seeing delays related to supply. How are the, how are those? Are you getting any? Are you getting any sense from from the tender application, the bid that you put out, that those are factors in the escalation of costs? Things that private sector companies are currently experiencing?
Yeah, so my expertise is
I think you may have to mute Mayor Spearman in there.
Apologize on that. Expertise is is not to go line by line through the construction contract, but the project team has. And and a lot of the costs are reflected or due to inflated construction materials. A big part of it is shipping as well as just the demand on the construction companies themselves and our in our constrained timeline. So those all had something to play with the materials and cost components. Again, a lot of these costs were just simply items that were not scoped initially. So it is truly a combination of the the two factors.
Thank you. Counselor Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. I thought I saw Council Moro in line ahead of me. Must have popped out. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. I recognize that nothing's being pushed off, but now it becomes, you know, this question of allocation of resources and where the priority, where the priority of the the spending should be, especially considering inflation. Are we seeing a same a similar inflation pressure on the on the, what do we call that? The the horizontal infrastructure, the underground infrastructure? Or is this on above ground on on vertical infrastructure and construction? Just a quick yes or no. We're seeing the same pressure. We're not would be great.
A little bit.
Okay, okay. Thank you. That's good to know. In in terms of of having to reapply, I guess what I what I'm really kind of exploring here is have we reached out to the province to give them the heads up and say, this was the project we felt we could do it within what to being in in what was being offered? Inflation, everything else, it's over budget. You know, nothing is fixed. Nothing is fixed in stone. And if we have to have an extension, extensions can certainly be requested. I guess it's about exploring all these avenues before we just go ahead and say, well, sure, let's just spend the money on on this particular project when we may actually be generating more bang for the buck by looking at one of the different options. Again, I'm not sure what the other projects were. But if I can just see by nods here, it doesn't look like anybody has actually reached out to the province to say, this is kind of where we're at, recognizing you need to come to council as well. But do you get any sense that we would be able to approach the province and say, this is where we're at? We recognize that there's the December thirty first spending on this. Is it possible to reevaluate to get a better bang for the buck for your buck, provincial tax dollars and for our community?
I think the short answer, Counselor Kaufman, is no, we have not reached out to the province and I think we absolutely could. And report back.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Spearman.
Counselor Moro, did you have a question?
Most of my questions have been asked. Thanks.
Acting Mayor Carlson?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. So there's no surprise going forward. The other two projects that also were approved under this are the airport project. Do we have any sense if those are going to come in with the budget we're expecting? Or would one of the better things be the ask province going, this one's over budget, do we need it for the other projects? Is there a possibility that, you know, is that an option? Do we know how those are coming in with the budget?
Is anybody be able to provide an update on the the status of the airport projects?
Mr. Dalton, I think that's an activity we can undertake to provide counsel at a later time.
Yeah, I would like that information. Come through.
Because maybe maybe instead of another project, we just get those other two done really well. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Spearman.
Thank you. Any further questions from council? Counselor Kaufman?
Sorry. Thank you, Mayor Spearman. Just one final question. Maybe just on on the acting mayor's questions. Are we undertaking any projects in the two thousand and twenty one CIP where the conditions meet what is approved or and again, I guess this comes from my misunderstanding or lack of understanding of the conditions around it, maybe had to be a new project. But the ability to apply or expend scope of something that we've already approved, again, bang for the buck. And I'll just leave that as maybe a question that needs to be answered. Thank you.
Yeah, that was a condition, Counselor Kaufman, of of this program. But we can, if it's council's direction for us to 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 go back to the to the province to determine whether or not there's flexibility and if there are other projects and or council would desire this money to be redirected potentially to another project that might be under some financial pressure, we can we can take a look at that.
Thank you. Even moving something forward from two thousand and twenty two would be at least another option. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Spearman.
Any further questions? Hey, there are no further questions. We have a resolution which talks about approving the funding for the Festival Square Market Plaza project and directing the manager, the city manager to proceed with the construction of the project. How does council wish to proceed? That's the motion on the table?
Could I recommend a motion that we refer back to administration for information?
That this come back to the June twenty ninth meeting?
If that's sufficient time that administration thinks they need?
Mr. Dalton or designates, would that be appropriate if we had a
Yes.
postpone?
Yes.
Okay, so
No, to refer, not postpone. Because if we postpone, they can't do anything. Referring means they get to give us answers.
Okay, refer? Okay, so Count Acting Mayor Croson is making a referral motion. I would assume seconded by Counselor Kaufman.
Yes, thank you.
Hey, that this be referred to the June twenty ninth city council meeting. That has the support of the city manager and his team. So I'll simply say all in favor. Counselor Carlson?
Can we not have some questions on this, Your Worship? Thank you. Just to make sure that that's two weeks from now, that doesn't seem too much of a delay. I'm just concerned with the deadline of getting the dollars spent. I mean, if we dilly-dally, we might lose nine hundred K is my concern. So is that a concern of administration or is that not a problem?
Perhaps, Mr. Malcolm, if you could answer that question related to a potential decision to go ahead with the market square piece. Difficult to answer if the money is going to be shifted or if council wants more information brought forward on those other two projects, we'd have to go back and look at that. But perhaps, Mr. Malcolm, if you could compact on the comment on the impact of, if any, to the market square timeline.
Yeah, specific to the Festival Square project, two weeks is not going to be an issue with the completion date. The honoring of the price in the bid, I would probably refer to Doug Hawkins to to comment on how long that's held for. But I, in terms of the construction, we were planning for not to actually begin until September after the busy July and August kind of business period. So so that timeline wouldn't be affected. But I do kind of, I support Mr. Dalton's comments that if it's to shift to another project, we'd have to do more digging into whether that can actually meet that timeline or not.
Yeah, typically, just to add to that, Counselor Carlson, we, from from the time that the tender closes, we have sixty days to accept. So I think we're still within that timeframe. And the contractor is obligated to honor the existing terms and conditions of the bid.
And thank you. I appreciate that. And Mr. Hawkins, just because words matter, you said you think we're still in that timeframe. I want to be sure we're still in that time.
We are. I think we are. Yes, we are.
Because prices could go up again and I'd hate to get caught further behind. So if two weeks is 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 fine, then I'll I'll bow to the king. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Moro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to the referral motion, my question to the city manager. So we've heard clearly that the project is what we had approved plus the the ask for today. So what's going to change in two weeks' time? Like, what are you going to come back with? The price is the price, the cost is the cost. What do you, I just need some clarity on what you plan on coming back by this being referred for two weeks?
Thanks, Council Moro. My my understanding based on the conversation is that we would we would look at the other two projects that were considered at the time this project was initially considered and see if there was an opportunity for council to consider one of the one of those other two projects. Again, remembering the intent of this program was to was to put shovels in the ground and contribute to economic recovery. And then the other piece was to go back and to Counselor Croson's question, determine whether or not the other two airport-related projects were were coming under the same financial pressure and if reallocating this money to those to ensure they got done was an option. So it was those two questions that we would seek to.
Mr. Dalton, I would just augment that with any opportunity we might have to engage with the province to understand if an extension or or an additional allocation of funding is possible in light of the inflation factors.
Yep.
Okay, and I I understand that. But the cost of this project isn't going to change. And for sure, it's not going to go down. So even if the province gives us an extension, at some point, we're still being asked to kick in an additional four hundred and eighty five thousand dollars. So that's my concern. What, why don't we, will you try and find a way to complete this project within the approved amount the council put their hand up for?
Yeah, I think I think Mr. Malcolm spoke to that and and the project team has looked at doing that. And unfortunately, as as Mr. Malcolm indicated, because of the 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 time pressures for us to bring projects forward to get approved under this program, which was rather quick, and the the increase costing as a result of COVID, we are where we are, is my understanding. But I'll I'll ask Mr. Mr. Malcolm if there's more work that can be done there.
Yeah, thank you. We would not, at this point, look to rescope the project to try and get it under that nine hundred thousand because we think we would just lose too many of the critical elements. If if not funded in this manner as presented, what we would rather do is table the project and bring it back forward when other grant opportunities potentially come up where we could seek the full amount through a federal grant or a provincial grant or at the or, you know, last case or last resort would be to wait until the next CIP process to put this forward as a as a full project build with the with the dollar amount of the day, given increasing inflation over the next four to five years.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Counselor Higgins?
Sorry, Counselor Carlson, you were ahead of me. Go ahead.
Thanks, Counselor Higgin. Just a quick question, if I can, Your Worship, through you to City Manager. I got very confused there. Council approved three projects to apply for. Those went forward. I believe we got funding for them. So I I don't understand what these other two projects that we're talking about are.
Yeah, I'm not aware of what the other two projects were, Counselor Carlson, but I've but I believe that when we brought this project forward, it was one of a number of projects for council to consider.
Yes, I think there was thirty in in the whole bucket and council chose three, if I recall, and said, these are the ones we would like to request funding for. And I think we got funding for them.
That's right. I think the if I if I understood Counselor Kaufman's point earlier was to go back to that bucket then. And and the question was, given the 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 change in price to to move forward with Festival Square, did we reconsider other projects in that bucket to bring forward as part of this deliberation for council?
Okay, thank you. What was the timeline between us saying these are the projects we'd like to put forward and going through the province and getting the approvals? Because that's going to be longer than two weeks, I'm pretty sure. My experience with the province has been it's much longer than two weeks. So I'm just curious what what we're thinking there.
Yeah, and our intent in the next two weeks wouldn't be to seek approval from the province. Our intent would be to to go back to that bucket and see if there are other options other than seeking additional funding to support this project moving forward. We would then, and we could have a conversation with the province as Miss Trent indicated, in the next couple of weeks around, because we're not the only community that that has confronted this, I'm certain. So I don't think this would be a surprise to them.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Higgin?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. And so to Mr. City Manager, this, again, as you had mentioned to Counselor Carlson, that pretty much, I guess I'm taking it this way, that this particular project is would be off if we're not going to be. It sounds like what's going on is that additional cost isn't going to be looked at because the price is the price, as Counselor Moro said. So you're you're going to actually go to the other projects, a way that there may not be any other funds brought forward by by the city. It'd be other projects we could be able to put this through. That's what you're going to be bringing back. Is that correct? Just so we don't lose this this nine hundred thousand?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
But to be clear, to move it to another project would require provincial approval. And we may, we may be in a situation paying the four hundred and, what was it? Four hundred and sixty five thousand? In order to get a one point four million dollar project built, right? Okay, thank you.
Mayor Spearman, and I would just add that that's where I think some of the discussion in and around the potential for an extension comes into play to the extent that we would look at a reallocation of the funds to another project, given the inflation.
All right. And you'll bring back an opinion too as to whether or not any other project would also be a catalytic project because that's the province was looking for projects that would create employment and assist with the recovery. Okay, thank you. Okay, so if there's no further questions, we still have to vote on the referral motion. Brought forward. Acting Mayor Croson, would you like to lead the debate?
This is just about doing due diligence so that we know all of our options before it comes back to us in two weeks for the vote. So this is about getting some questions answered, seeing what options are there. And then we will deal with this issue in two weeks. So I'm hoping my colleagues will support the referral so that we can have the information needed for the best possible decision.
Any further debate from council? Counselor Higgin and then Counselor Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. Yes. I don't want to lose the nine hundred thousand, but I definitely don't want to put another five hundred thousand in to to a project. And so hearing what I did with Mr. Dalton, that he'll go away and it sounds like this particular project, the price is the price, he'll come back, how we could maybe allocate those funds to to a another one of the projects, the pool of of thirty or whatever that number is, is is a little more palatable for for me anyways. And so for that reason, I will support postponed, or sorry, referring. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. My apologies for the confusion on the two projects, two thirty, you know, it's they're both close numbers. Please don't be depending on my memory, members of council, but thank you for the consideration. Yes, I think this is an opportunity just to take a step back. If inflation is going to be affecting some of these projects, we need to be as good stewards of provincial dollars as we are of our own tax dollars. I think we've got a provincial administration in Edmonton that's just as concerned about how money is spent. And to approach them and say, hey, we've got some concern about this particular project. Would we get your approval to look at a different project as a possible to extend beyond December thirty first and look at applying it, I think more efficiently, more effectively within our community would be at least an option needs to be explored before we put up our hand to expand spending on this particular project. So I will support the referral and look forward to the information. Thank you, Mr. Spearman.
Counselor Carlson?
Thanks, Mayor Spearman. I likely will support the two-week delay. I was ready to move forward to I, I was ready to move forward today. The bulk of the, um, the extra expenses seemed to me to be, uh, improvements that are going to be necessary. Doing them in conjunction with this process, uh, and project actually makes sense in terms of efficiencies and, uh, saving time, saving dollars, not having to dig up the same street twice, uh, and cause to-
Back if necessary, if deemed to be more effective than any of the alternatives. I'd rather have a project that is, uh, going to make a difference than, uh, funding ones which are, uh, lower tier simply on the basis that they can be done within a budget. So, uh, let's listen to what the community said. There was community support for this project. And, uh, for that reason, I will, uh, support the, uh, referral motion and look forward to the information coming back to council in two weeks. Councillor Croson, acting mayor Croson, would you like to close?
Call the question.
Question's been called, all in favor? Are any opposed to the referral motion?
Yes, Joe.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Eight to one, eight, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to 5.2. We have a resolution from the chairman of the audit committee, councillor Miyashiro, 2021 to 2022 operating budget review final document. Be it resolved that city council receive the report and attachment as information. Councillor Miyashiro? Councillor Miyashiro out there?
Sorry, I lost my screen. Just give me, give me a second. I have too many things going on my screens right now. One, give me one second. After city council approved the 2021, 2022 operating budget, administration compiled and updated the related budget document to reflect so, those decisions. So on May 19th, 2020, uh, council unanimously approved a motion to undertake a review of the 2021, 2022 operating budget in November of 2020. In order to consider the impacts of COVID-19-related changes, the KPMG operational review and possible amendments to the Alberta provincial budget. City council members met as finance committee from November 23rd to 27th, 2020 to debate the 2021 and 2022 operating budget for the city of Lethbridge. The operating budget received final approval from council on December 14th, 2020. And again, this document reflects those decisions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? I do have a question. Uh, recently, there've been a number of concerns expressed in the community about debt. And I, I, when, when the financial report came up, I did ask those questions. And then more recently, some concern about almost $30 million in ongoing annual debt payments. And I'm pleased to see the answer in the, uh, in the report that we have today. So as, I'm just going to ask Ms. Jared if she's there to confirm what my understanding is. Looking at page seven of the document and looking at expenses, and the third line down is debt payments. And we see debt increasing from $28,300,000 in the 2020 budget to $29,500,000 in the 2021 request and $29,705,000 in the 2022 request. But when we look at the operating expenses which occur on, uh, the next page, page eight, we actually see the debt payments for operating declining from $12,600,000 in 2020 to $12,500,000 in 2021 and $11,700,000 in 2022. So where are the debt payments actually increasing? And the answer seems to be the utility fund. So when we go to page nine and we look at the debt payments, we see the, the debt payments to utilities increasing from $15,700,000 to $17,000,000 in, uh, 2021 and to almost $18,000,000 in 2022. So my question to, uh, Ms. Jared is, uh, am I correct in that op- the, uh, the, the proportion of operating expenses committed to debt is actually declining going forward? And that the debt payments that are, that are increasing in utilities will be fully funded from utility rates and not from taxation? Is that correct? Ms. Jared, and then perhaps Mr. Hawkins?
Mayor Spearman, yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, I can just, just add to that, Mr. Mayor. The, uh, what you're seeing reflected in this budget is the CIP, is the, is the pressure that the CIP places on, on utility services. The debt itself is funded from operations and, uh, and, uh, and it is fully self-supported by utility rates.
Okay, thank you very much. No impact on taxation, thank you. Any further questions from council? Councillor Higgins?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. Actually, bringing up what you did, I just have a question for, for Mr. Hawkins. So although there's no, uh, a change to taxation because of this, obviously, if it's coming from a utility, then does that not mean that the utility, in order to be sustainable, the costs that are, are being charged out to the community for utilities would go up to, to cover these costs? Is that not correct?
The, um, we, we typically operate, on a, the council recall from the, the CIP presentations from the utilities, um, we, we work within an envelope of overall debt servicing. And as, as old debt falls off, it's, it is taken up by new projects and new debt that's incurred. But as long as we stay below what we call a debt servicing limit, it has no effect on increasing utility rates. And in fact, the CIP- Sorry.
But we could have utility rates go down if we did not have that debt. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Precis- if, if council was inclined not to make investments and incur additional debt, you're right, the, there, there would be an opportunity for, for rate relief.
Thank you.
So I guess the, the question that would follow Mr. Hawkins is, uh, the, the utility investments that are proposed, or are they not necessary to support, uh, the city going forward? Or do we have frivolous capital that we've put in the utility fund that we're just doing it just to incur debt?
Uh, yes, they are essential projects, and no, they're not frivolous. We, we would not bring frivolous projects forward for council's consideration.
So they're, they're needed to sub- replace existing infrastructure, e- existing equipment and growth of the city going forward, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Any further questions? I see none. So we're back to the resolution proposed by councillor Miyashiro. Be it resolved that city council receive the report and attachment as information. Councillor Miyashiro?
Uh, there's no questions about the resolution itself. I'll open it up for, uh, debate and my colleagues.
Debate? Councillor Higgins?
Actually, that's, that's okay. Uh, I'll take my hand down.
I'd like to thank, uh, administration, uh, Mr. Dalton and, uh, his reports for the report and, uh, the great information that is provided. Uh, there is additional narrative that's available to the community that explains more than just the numbers. And I think this is very useful information for us to have so we can talk about our financial information on a factual basis. Thank you. Councillor Carlson?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Spearman. Just like to add my thanks to, um, uh, Mr. Dalton and his staff, especially our finance department, uh, well, all of our business units. They did a lot of work, uh, to help council, uh, last fall when we reopened the budget to, uh, try and, uh, and achieve some targets. And so thank you for the, the work. Thank you for putting this together. And it's nice to have this final report that we can share with the community. And so, uh, you have my complete support, councillor Miyashiro.
Any further debate? Councillor Higgins?
Sir, Mayor Spearman, I, I was not going to debate here, but I just wanted to, uh, I understand as I see this, that is to receive as information. I've, I do have a few questions inside, but it's strictly for information, so I will support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll ask councillor Miyashiro to close.
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor Spearman. And I, I'll echo what my colleagues have said, um, and thanking the staff, um, Ms. Pinkston and her staff and, and all the, the unit managers and the financial staff from, from our different departments. Uh, to get from, uh, a purely financial, um, piece of information to a report that's, that's easily read and understood, uh, by many is a difficult task. And I think the way that our, our staff pull together, uh, financial reporting is among the best around. And I'd just like to thank them and ask for support for this resolution. Call the question.
Question's been called, all in favor? Are any opposed? Thank you, that's unanimous. We'll now move to 5.3. We have a resolution from councillor Kaufman. 2021 council orientation and transition program. Be it resolved that city council adopt the 2021 council orientation and transition program as provided in attachments one, two, and three. Councillor Kaufman?
Mute.
Are you telling me I'm on, or are you telling me to stop?
Yes.
You are here speaking to the resolution, the submission 5.3.
Thank you, and I started with a thank you to my colleagues, but maybe I'll bump that one to the end. Thank you to the city clerk, um, and her staff for all the work, uh, at, at, um, putting together an incredibly, um, insightful, informative, uh, fulsome, um, conversation for the, um, newly elected council in October of this year. If your, uh, name is going to be on the municipal ballot, I would, um, strongly suggest you look at the, uh, schedule now and start planning accordingly, uh, because it's a very, very busy schedule. Um, I think it's, uh, item three, or attachment number three is the short calendar. Attachment one is a longer schedule. And attachment two is the information session. And this is basically the council orientation and transition program for newly elected members following the municipal election. Uh, a very special thank you as well to my colleagues, former colleagues on Open and Effective Government Committee that, uh, spent time reviewing this and preparing this, as well as, um, the Governance Standing Policy Committee, uh, councillors Moro, Carlson and Croson, uh, for their work on this as well. And I would encourage my colleagues to support it and, um, move forward from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Carlson?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Spearman. I do have an amendment, uh, that I believe Ms. Hilford, uh, prepared for me. So she, I believe she has it.
Okay, this is a different res- resolution. I'm not sure how to handle this, so, uh, the, okay, so there's an amendment that says, be it resolved that the main motion be amended as follows. That advocacy session be moved from November 22nd up to October 27th and include Team Lethbridge and AUMA convention. And two, that fees for service session, which includes grants to external organizations, be added as a new session to November 26th. Councillor Carlson?
Uh, thank you, M- Mayor Spearman. Um, thank you, Ms. Hilford, for the work on this. Uh, I do appreciate all the work you and your team have done on orientation, as well as your openness and invitations to members, current members of council, uh, to, to be, uh, provide our input on what we think would work and what we think wouldn't. Uh, the two things that, uh, Ms. Hilford and I discussed following the last presentation to, um, governance committee was that, uh, the, um, the advocacy session, uh, was a bit late for members of council who may be, uh, new to the position and may be attending both Team Lethbridge, which is our, our biannual trip up to Edmonton to meet with government, as well as AUMA. And so my suggestion was that we just move it a bit earlier and include those to give, uh, members of, uh, council a bit of an overview on what to expect. It's, uh, yeah, for those of us who have been new and just sort of showed up and didn't know what was going on, i- it's a bit of an eye-opening experience. This will give new members of council sort of an overview. The, the next one is, uh, during our financial sessions, and there's two sessions planned for the incoming council. Uh, I did notice that fee for service, which is one of the things we do, in my opinion, very well, uh, here in Lethbridge, but it's also something that council has been focused on the last couple of years of trying to, um, work our way through our grants and fees for service. I noticed that fee for service had not, uh, was not a topic of discussion. I think it would be beneficial to new members of council to learn about how we do things through fee and services to deliver service, uh, to our community. So those are just two small changes. I hope, uh, uh, there's nothing too shocking in them, uh, but I'm open to questions.
I'll second that.
Thank you, councillor.
Any discussion on the amendment? Questions? Councillor Kaufman?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Spearman. Uh, yeah, I actually would have accepted this as a, as a friendly as well, but, um, thank you to councillor Carlson and, and the talk show host, um, or sorry, councillor Miyashiro. Absolutely, uh, on the, on the advocacy one, I think we had, we had had a cursory conversation about that at governance. Um, the fee for service and, and if the motion could be corrected to fee for service?
Oh.
Yeah, from fees.
Can I just notice that?
Thank you. Um, the fee for service session, um, recognizing the intensity of orientation as is, this one seems a little out of place for me, and this would be a primer for budget, would it not? As opposed to in an orientation session?
And thank you, it's on Friday, November 26th. Uh, that's exactly the session it deals with. Yeah, that session is dealing with financial planning and budgeting, walking through our operating capital budgets. Um, and since we talk about the business units, we also talk about our, um, utilities and how they're funded, grants and other funding. I just thought it made sense while we're talking about revenues and expenses to show, uh, some of our, some of our big outlays are to fee for service groups. Um, I thought it, it would be an appropriate time to at least give an overview of how, how we do achieve, hopefully, efficiencies through fee and service, fee for service.
Okay. Okay, I, I, I tend to see it as being something that you would, you would put later as you are, as the next councils approaching, uh, operating budget conversations to have a, certainly have an in-service about fee for service. Um, but I see what, what it is you're attempting to do here in, in terms of that process. So, okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Spearman.
And thank you, councillor. And it, it wouldn't be a, perhaps a standalone session. It's included in that financial planning, budgeting, talk around our operating capital. So it's just a piece of that, sorry.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, can we move on to debate on the amendment? Uh, councillor Carlson?
Uh, nothing further, your worship. I'll, unless there's other debate, I'll call for the vote.
Councillor Miyashiro?
Oh, no, sorry.
Okay, question's been called. All in favor of the amendment? Are any opposed? It's unanimous, there are none. Okay, so now we will look at the motion as amended. Well, can we have that on the screen, please? So be it resolved that council adopt the 2021 council orientation and transition program as provided in attachments one, two, and three. And be it re- be it resolved that the advocacy- that the advocacy section be moved from November 22 up to October 27 and include A, Team Lethbridge, and B, AUMA convention, and that a fee for service session, which includes grants to external organizations, be added as a, as a new session to November 26. Any questions on the amended motion? Counselor Misha, are you in the queue? Nope. Counselor Carlson?
Thanks, Mayor Spearman. Through you to city manager or designate, I'm assuming city clerk. One of the things that's always been fascinating to me is that there aren't a lot of rules and regulations around what a council needs to do or needs to attend, or I know that the MGA or the province did amend some things. Is this now mandatory? Because we've heard before, once you're elected, you're, you're answerable to the public, and we can build a schedule, but you don't have to attend. Is this now mandatory for all elected officials to take this orientation?
Who can answer that question? Looks like our city clerk's gonna give it a shot.
Yes. So the answer to that question, Counselor Carlson, is municipalities, and this is in the Municipal Government Act that just was revised. Municipalities are required to offer orientation training within 90 days after each councillor takes the oath of office. So it doesn't necessarily say that it's mandatory for every member of council. In the council policy on orientation, there is a clause in there that says administration will present a council orientation and training plan to council for its approval before every general municipal election to orientate, orient, orient all members of council.
So thank you. So the only change was we had to do one. We've always done an orientation, but the change was we have, all municipalities have to do one, but there's still no teeth around folks attending, correct?
That's the way it reads, yes.
It's very unfortunate, but thank you.
If you already know everything, you don't have to attend. Anybody else? Any questions? I see none. We'll move on to debate. Counselor Kaufman?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Spearman. My camera's off because I'm split-screen here. If members of council look at Section 13 of the Code of Conduct bylaw, Section 13.1 states every member must attend the orientation training offered by the city within 90 days after the member takes the oath of office. Attendance at any additional training sessions throughout the council term is discretionary. So by our code of conduct, when you take your oath of office, you are agreeing to the Code of Conduct bylaw, which is legislation. Every member must attend the orientation training. So that's the response to Counselor Carlson's question.
Okay. And what are the consequences if you violate the code of conduct?
There's a process in the code of conduct.
Phenomenal question. There is a process, though, as the, as Counselor Misha has identified. There is a process that the member would be, would be having to follow.
Thank you. Any further questions? Counselor Misha?
No, I was up for debate, and then we regressed.
Okay. Okay. So debate, Counselor Kaufman. That's your original motion that's been amended?
Thank you. I'll leave my regressions to closing. Thank you.
Okay, any further debate or regressions? I see none. Last.
I have debate.
Okay, go ahead.
So what I, I just want to say thank you to the, to the clerk's office and any councillors that helped draft this orientation session. It's, it's comprehensive. It's, it's easy to understand. It flows properly. I think any, anyone that picks this up would, would see what they're in for immediately. The time commitment involved as they, as they go into running for office. I want to also thank the fact that it's done well ahead of time. I do recall in 2013 that the outgoing council didn't feel necessary to have an orientation session for the incoming council. And it really did put that council back probably four or five months. So I'm, I'm really appreciative of, of the group that pulled this together, and it will very much help the incoming council. I'm fully in favor of this orientation.
I'm, I also would like to echo my thanks. I will support this. I hope that this information will be provided to prospective members of council when they, when they file for and register as candidates or, I think you can register anytime, but certainly prospective councillors should have this information before Election Day, so they fully understand what they're undertaking. So hopefully, hopefully they will have that information before they find out they've been elected. So, thank you. There's nothing further. I'll ask Counselor Kaufman to close.
Thank you, Mayor Spearman, and, and yes, the thank yous have been provided. Again, thank you to staff for all the work on this and to my committee colleagues for all the time and effort and consideration put into this. If you are considering a bid for city council in October of this year, please look at this information and book the time now. It's, it's intensive. If you're new to the process, this is an entirely different language. It's an entirely different environment that you're working in. And I see Counselor Campbell in his first term nodding, nodding in agreement with that. You are, as they say, drinking from the fire hose when you arrive. If you're unfamiliar with the process, if you're unfamiliar with the legislation, if you're unfamiliar with the requirements of this particular role, each and every one of these sessions is going to provide you with the knowledge you need in order to achieve the ultimate, which is good governance. That's, that's all any council can ask for, or a future council, is that you undertake good governance. And this orientation process is, is incredible compared to processes that have been in, in place in the past. And I think it will, will arm the new members of council fully in terms of understanding what it is that they are, are elected to do and will better offer the community, will offer the community a better level of governance, a better level of oversight, which can only lead to a, a better organization in the long term. So I ask for my colleagues' support on this and call the question.
Question's been called. All in favor? Are any opposed? There are none. Thank you. That is unanimous. Okay, I have a resolution from Counselor Higgins. Request for unclaimed found money, case CA 21006987. Be it resolved that City Council authorize that David Kunst, as the founder, receive unclaimed money, found money of $200 and direct administration to return to a future meeting of council with an amendment to the city manager bylaw, delegating the city manager the authority to allocate, allocate requests for unclaimed found money under $5,000 to the founder in consultation with Lethbridge Police Services. Counselor Higgins?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. This happens on occasion, and it's just in line, in alignment with the legislation contained in the Municipal Government Act, so I would just ask for my counsel's support.
Are there any questions from council? I see none. Counselor Croson?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. Just with regards to having the city manager take care of these in the future under a certain amount, can the city manager or designate answer? What do other communities do? Is it normal to have this done by administration? Because as Counselor Higgins said, there is a requirement. If that requirement and that process is followed, then this just, you know, moves along. So can anyone answer, is this regularly done by administration in other communities?
I'll ask the city clerk to please respond.
In my experiences of other municipalities, I haven't seen these come to council, and I'm not entirely sure exactly what's done behind the scenes, but I haven't seen them come to council.
That's what I sort of imagine, because like I said, there's, there's a process. There's really, council really doesn't have a decision. If the process has been followed, it's been followed. So thank you.
If I can, if I can just add that the municipality may dispose of the property by public auction or as council directs. So again, you're doing this through a delegation. I don't know how other municipalities do it, but again, they don't come to council.
Yeah, I don't know how you do an auction on money, because I bid the exact same amount. Thank you very much.
Thank you. There are no further questions. It'll just move to debate. Fairly self-evident. Counselor Higgins?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. Yes, further to what Counselor, or sorry, Acting Mayor Croson mentioned, that disposal of public, public auction, I would definitely like to know where that was going to be held, because it would be great to be able to make some funds off, less funds, so. But yes, it's, it's something that's obviously, it's in alignment with our, the corporate strategic plan, and it's, it's, it's something that is done on not a very regular basis, and maybe it's something to look into as far as the questions that Counselor Croson had mentioned, that maybe we could look into how other communities do this. But there's no further debate. I would call for the vote.
Okay, question's been called. All in favor? Are any opposed? There are none, so that is unanimous. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to official business resolutions. It's 2:51. Does anyone need a break? At this point, we've been going since 2:30. Do you want a break until 3 o'clock? Or keep going?
It'll be good to give the staff a little bit of a break.
Yeah, I'd, I'd drive a quick car.
Okay, we will break until 3 o'clock and resume with official business resolutions.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, we'll now resume the city council meeting. We'll start with official business resolution 6.1, AUMA Resolution, Electronic Voting for the 2025 Municipal Elections. I'll ask that the resolution be read by the deputy mayor, please.
Sure, I can do that. Uh, whereas electronic voting as an option could be deemed as a convenience by many voters, with a potential to increase voter participation, and whereas the technology now exists to provide secure and adaptable electronic voting processes, and whereas the general population is increasingly embracing the use of technology for a wide variety of uses, and whereas the use of electronic voting would provide opportunities for efficiencies and lower costs for municipalities by reducing the number of polling stations and associated staffing, and whereas voters could participate in a barrier-free election process unimpeded by mobility challenges, parking issues, traffic jams, lineups to vote, ballot shortages, or adverse weather. Whereas council, at their June 1st, 2021 meeting, adopted a motion to submit a resolution to Alberta Urban Municipalities Association, requesting them to enter into discussions with the government of Alberta and advocate for the necessary legislative changes to the local authorities' election act to permit secure electronic voting in time to be implemented for the 2025 Alberta municipal elections. Therefore, be it resolved that the attached Alberta Municipalities Association resolution be forwarded to another Alberta member municipality for adoption as to the seconder of the resolution required by Alberta Urban Municipalities Association, and then to the Alberta Urban Municipalities Association for consideration at their annual convention, November 17th to 19th, 2021, in Edmonton. Mayor Spearman.
Thank you. This follows from last meeting, as indicated in the resolution. Included is the proposed resolution for the AUMA moved by the city of Lethbridge. There have been several mid-sized cities who have offered to, uh, second this resolution. Uh, the first to come forward was the city of St. Albert, uh, but others such as Erdry and Laduk had also offered to second this resolution. So, included for city council's reference is the proposed AMA resolution and the background, uh, that has been provided, uh, which could be published. We've been having some exchanges with AUMA about what can be included in the background, and, uh, I believe that the information's provided would meet their requirements.
Are there any questions? I see no questions. I'll open up to debate. Mayor Spearman, I assume that's your debate?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else would like to debate? I see none. Mayor Spearman.
Uh, this resolution follows from a presentation that was made to Lethbridge City Council. Um, there is a local company that potentially could provide this, but, uh, we're not specifying in the resolution that it must be the local company. It's just they brought it to our attention that uh, the technology now, it's now exists, and, uh, there is a potential that the company could benefit, but certainly, uh, uh, this would be up to a few years of discussion with the, uh, AUMA and the Governor of Alberta, and most importantly, the, the ending, uh, the people who benefit most are the people who vote in the, uh, in the subsequent electoral processes. So, I would ask for my colleagues' support.
Vote has been called. Is there, uh, anyone opposed?
Yes, Joe.
Joe is opposed. That is there, um, no one else, so that is, uh, that is, uh, passed eight to one. Thank you.
Okay, we have a resolution now from Counselor Kaufman, Indigenous Placemaking Strategy. Whereas the discovery in Kamloops, B.C. of a mass grave holding the bodies of 215 indigenous children has renewed calls for governments to take substantive action on the truth and reconciliation calls to action. And whereas the city of Lethbridge is responsible for the public spaces in our communities, such as city-owned parks, neighborhoods, and facilities, certain historical markers, as well as the naming of public infrastructure and spaces. And whereas city council approved the Indigenous placemaking strategy as part of the 2022 to 2031 Capital Improvement Program, a strategy that includes a review, or in brackets, audit of the public spaces, markers, and language used by the city. And whereas undertaking an audit of our public spaces done through the lenses of truth and reconciliation and inclusion would allow our community to have a conversation around placemaking and possibly determine outcomes where public spaces can further define us as a community. Therefore, be it resolved that city council advance the Indigenous placemaking strategy by amending the June 1 regular meeting of council decision on Indigenous placemaking strategy, section D, page 17 of the 2022 to 2031 Capital Improvement Program. Two, A, revise the start year for the Indigenous placemaking strategy from 2022 to 2021. And B, revise the funding source for the Indigenous placemaking strategy from community project unfunded section to the major capital projects reserve. And further be it resolved that the city manager include regular updates on the work of the Indigenous placemaking strategy as part of city council's work plan. And further be it resolved that city, the city manager present city council with the findings of the public spaces audit and recommendations for further action no li- no later than February the 28th, 2022. Counselor Kaufman.
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. Uh, just briefly to my colleagues, or quickly to my colleagues, this is a simple request to move forward a project the council's already approved through the CIP process, uh, from starting in 2022 to move it forward basically by six months to start it this year. And it is about looking at the public spaces that the city, over which the city has jurisdiction and authority, and to begin looking at these places and spaces. Um, this comes, uh, certainly on the heels of an absolutely horrific discovery in Kamloops, um, as well as an expansion of a discovery, uh, in Brandon on the weekend as well. Um, and, um, my desire, the community's desire, to actually start having a different conversation around, uh, truth and reconciliation. So, this is really about moving, uh, just moving a project forward, um, six months, starting it earlier, starting it ahead of time. So, the next council and, uh, uh, the work can be advanced at a, at a quicker pace.
Thanks. Thank you, Counselor Kaufman. Okay, we'll move on to questions. Counselor Carlson.
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. Uh, thank you, Counselor Kaufman, for bringing this forward. A couple of quick questions, uh, through your worship perhaps to city manager designate. Um, this is just to move, I believe, the 50,000 into this year's budget, sort of moving the, the project ahead a bit faster. Um, just want to be clear about our capacity, uh, as an organization, to take that on in the next six months.
Thanks, Counselor Carlson. Yes, our sense is we can, um, our indigenous relation folks can, can manage that.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Um, second question through, um, you, your worship, perhaps to the city manager or even the mover. The second part about revising the funding source, is that necessary because we're expending 50,000 in this year? Because I believe, um, City Treasurer Ms. Pinkson had said that we were approving everything as, um, as, um, the, um, I can't remember the term. I'm trying to remember the term that we used, uh, undetermined funding. Uh, because they were going to look at all the projects that were approved and figure out where they best fit. And so I don't know if that's necessary or not. Perhaps either you or the city manager can answer that. If we could just leave it as undetermined, so that we're not pulling from certain pots before we figure the whole capital budget out in totality?
Thank you. I did actually reach out and ask about this, because funding was, was my second question after capacity. Uh, and this was the response I actually received, uh, through Ms. Trent from Ms. Pinkson, was that this was, this would be the place for, uh, funding if we're going to put it in the second half of this year.
Okay, thank you. I think that clears it up for me. Thank you, Mayor Spearman.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Ca- uh, Kaufman, with this, uh, the process that's envisioned, uh, how wide a consultation process would this involve in terms of, uh, working with our indigenous community and our indigenous neighbors? How, how do you envision this taking place?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Spearman. This isn't about me envisioning it. This is, um, this is from the CIP presentation on Indigenous placemaking, uh, that council received earlier. Uh, so as outlined, and if you'll forgive me, my screen is going to go blank, because I have to open up. Um, uh, from the, uh, from CIP document, uh, on page 17, section D of page 17, um, it's about conducting a review of the current and planned inventory of city-owned parks, neighborhoods, and facilities collectively the public realm, and determine opportunities to enhance indigenous placemaking. So, this is about, uh, the organization working with the indigenous community, working with the community writ large about it. Uh, I see, um, Carly has joined us as well, and she probably has a, a more articulate answer than I do.
Thank you, Counselor Kaufman. I think that, that we wouldn't want to make any assumptions on how, how wide this is until we actually do, uh, what Counselor Kaufman is proposing, which is part of this, this audit. So then we will have a baseline of where to start. Um, I think that at this time, we might actually find some opportunities as well for, for more ways that we can partner with our, with our indigenous, um, with our indigenous neighbors as well. So I think what we would want to do is actually get really good information first.
Okay, and then that information would be available to the community and, uh, okay, thank you very much. Any further questions? I see none. Move on to debate. Counselor Kaufman.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Spearman. Again, just very simply, this is about moving a project that city council has approved for the next cycle. Um, just moving it ahead by six months, uh, and starting it this year, so the work can begin this year, so that, uh, it, um, it starts the project a little bit sooner, and, and it begins a very valuable, very important conversation in the community. Just ask for my colleagues' support.
Okay, Councilor Mia Shirro.
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor Spearman. Uh, thank you, Counselor Kaufman, for bringing this forward. Um, I think it's the right time to, to bring this forward. Uh, we did debate this in the CIP process. Uh, we agree that this is something that we need to do, and you're right, with, uh, what's going on across Canada right now. I think it's a, a strong message to our indigenous community, and as you said, to the community as a whole, that we're willing to make some motion, uh, some movement on this issue. So, thank you, and I will support this.
Thank you. Any other debate from counselors? I too will support the issue. I think, uh, do support the resolution. I, I think it's a thoughtful, uh, tangible way to move forward, and, uh, it's, uh, it's about having a plan rather than, uh, rushing to do things. So, I will support the resolution. Any further debate? I will ask Counselor Kaufman to close.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Spearman. I, I think, um, beyond the challenges of discoveries of mass graves, and, and we need to stop and think about that phrase. We, we generally think of the phrase mass graves related to the Rwandan massacre, Severnitsa Holocaust, Russia, or the Soviet Union. Um, the discovery of this mass grave and, and undoubtedly the discovery by others across this country has changed the conversation. And there is a, an immediate, um, desire, I think, amongst, um, many and many different communities about taking action and taking action right now. But reconciliation isn't about just saying I'm sorry and then changing names. Uh, it's actually about re-establishing relationships, or perhaps a little more directly here in, in Lethbridge. It's about establishing relationships with our urban indigenous community, uh, within the city as well as our neighbors. Um, this is a process, this is a step that we need to take in order to, um, to help, uh, solidify that a little bit more. It does show everybody in our community, regardless of who you are, that we are actually looking at this through a very serious, uh, serious lens that we are. We do take this responsibility, this responsibility of truth and reconciliation to heart and to task. But actions always mean much more than words. So, this is about starting it, um, sooner rather than later, and getting to the work that we need to do in order to move forward as a community. I'll call the question.
Question has been called. All in favor? Are any opposed? There are none. It is unanimous. Thank you. Okay, and now move on to 6.3. I have a resolution from Counselor Higgin, repealing bylaw 6239, Temporary Mandatory Face Coverings Bylaw. Whereas on 24th of August, 2020, the city of Lethbridge enacted bylaw 6239, the Temporary Mandatory Face Coverings Bylaw, until the 31st of December, 2020. And whereas on November 30th, 2020, city council by resolution extended the city of Lethbridge bylaw 6239 Mandatory Face Coverings Bylaw until 23rd, February, 2021. And whereas on the 23rd of February, 2021, city council by resolution extended the city of Lethbridge bylaw 6239 Temporary Mandatory Face Coverings Bylaw until April 30th, 2021. And whereas on April 6, 2021, city council by resolution extended the city of Lethbridge bylaw 6239 Temporary Mandatory Face Coverings Bylaw until the 31st of December, 2021. And whereas it has been 295 days since city council enacted bylaw 6239 Temporary Mandatory Face Coverings Bylaw. And whereas Alberta's chief medical officer of health is the leading advisor of the Governor of Alberta's COVID-19 response. And whereas as of June 14th, 2020, 21, 3,412,751, or 68.8% of age 12-plus population has received at least one dose of the COVID-19 vaccine, 58.6% of the total population. And whereas as of 14, 2021, 20%, 20.8% of 12-plus population is fully vaccinated and 17.7 total population. Whereas on the 1st of June, 2021, the Governor of Alberta, on the advice of the Alberta Chief Medical Officer of Health, has entered stage one of Alberta's Open for Summer Plan. And whereas the province of Alberta anticipates fully ending COVID-19 safety measures, the province-wide mask mandate, limits on indoor and outdoor gatherings, and constraints on business and constraints on businesses two weeks after 70% of Albertans have received at least one dose of the COVID-19 vaccine. And whereas the government of Alberta anticipates this threshold could be reached as soon as the 28th of June 2021. Therefore, be it resolved that to ensure consistent enforcement and understanding of public safety messaging, city council direct that bylaw 6239, the temporary mandatory face coverings bylaw be repealed within 24 hours of the effective date of stage three of Alberta's Open for Summer Plan. Councillor Higgin?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. I won't go into a lot of details on this. We've visited this, as you've seen at the beginning of the resolution, a few times over the past few months. And so I will just open it up for questions.
Okay, councillor Carlson?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. Thank you councillor Higgin. Through you, your worship, probably to the city clerk, I assume, on process. In the resolution itself, it states we last discussed repealing or extending the 62, what is the bylaw? 6239 in April. Does this fall under our guidelines of motion to reconsider? Or is, I'm just not sure how this comes forward so soon after the last debate and discussion? That's the first question.
Thank you for the question. Because it's a bylaw, I think I would have to refer that question to the law department. And I think Sherry's on the line. Thank you.
Hi, it's Sherry's here. The bylaw contemplates extensions by resolution. So I I would think that if council wants to reconsider the length of time the bylaws extended to, I think it's open to council to do that. We just have to follow the, whatever the, this, for back to the city clerk, the, whatever majority we need to in order to bring it back. Sorry, I'm just trying to pull up my procedure bylaw here. And I think this is a little bit unusual because it does relate to a bylaw and it's a resolution.
Yes, I just wasn't sure if it fell under our motion to reconsider or not.
I'm just trying to find it here. So I think the resolution that councillor Higgins brought forward is a little bit different than what's contemplated by a motion to reconsider. The motion to reconsider, or sorry, the motion last time was to extend the bylaw, and this is to consider, I think, revoking the bylaw. So I think they're quite different. So I think this is a brand-new motion.
Thank you for that. And further question to you, Ms. Hillford or Ms. Shigeru. How does council traditionally repeal a bylaw? Is it through resolution or is it through a bylaw?
So I can answer that for you as well. Section 191 of the MGA requires a bylaw to be repealed by bylaw. And that is, that is the normal course that we would take.
Not by council resolution, by bylaw. Okay.
Correct.
So this is not a bylaw. This is a resolution. I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out the process that we would follow. Like if this passes, do we then have to go through a bylaw? First reading, second reading, at some, oops, pardon me, at some future date? I'm just not, I've never repealed a bylaw through a simple OBR. So I'm just unclear.
So I'm not sure if councillor Higgin wants to jump in here to comment or if you want me to answer that question?
Whoever can answer what the process would be. Because this seems strange to me, but I'll defer.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not legal on this, so I definitely would like to pass on to Sherry on this. But it would work the same way in us extending a bylaw that was done by resolution. And looking into other communities, extending by resolution a bylaw in the first place actually is not is not correct from what I've heard. Now, I'd like to hear more on that. And so when we extended it, really if we're going down the path, that path, there would need to be another bylaw for a second and third reading to even extend it when we did it previously. This is just some information that I've received in the last while. So if we extended it by resolution, we should be able to redact by resolution as well. That is my understanding, but I'd like to hear more from legal or if anybody has any other comments on that from administration?
Yeah, I think ideally it would be an extension by bylaw. But here, the bylaw specifically contemplated an extension by resolution. And it is only the extensions that are contemplated by the bylaw. It doesn't contemplate repealing or rescinding the bylaw by resolution. So I was actually able to go back to the video when this amendment was proposed to the bylaw. And I think at that time, the city solicitor, Mr. Lowen, had indicated that a repeal of the bylaw would have to be done by bylaw.
So was, I guess the question I have is, was that brought forward for council's understanding prior? Or, I mean, we're in here today and this information obviously has been for some time as far as process. And I'm just curious to know, I guess my question would be, Ms. Shigeru, is it possible to do this? And as far as extending or sorry, redacting this bylaw by resolution? Are you completely clear that we cannot or you don't quite know?
I am very clear that the MGA requires us to repeal a bylaw by bylaw. It is very clear in the MGA.
Thank you. So for this reason to come forward, it's on here and to have that understanding, I'm just, yeah. So the reconsideration is in the same session then if it was to be? I'm just, I'm just a little confused on this. And from what I've researched is, and that's why I went back to the whole idea of extending this. And thank you for explaining how the resolution was extended or it was, is extended by resolution. And so I'm just wondering, this is in your legal opinion, we are not able to do this then? Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Councillor Kaufman?
Thank you. My question was answered. Thank you.
Councillor Carlson?
My question was also about the validity of this, so thank you.
Councillor Moro?
Thanks. I would just like some clarity on that last comment made by the solicitor. Because when I read the resolution, all the resolution is saying to me, or at least what I'm picking up, is that once the province makes their call, that within 24 hours, we would then take action. And that action, if it needs to be a bylaw, would take place then. So what I heard you say, correct me, is that we can't even have this resolution to vote on it? Is that what you said?
You can still vote on it. I guess it depends with the, when I read this OBR, it's that without any further action by council, the bylaws repealed without council taking any further action. It's not that you can't repeal the bylaw. You can definitely repeal the bylaw. You would just need a repealing bylaw to do that.
So therefore, if there was an amendment in this resolution stating the last, therefore be it resolved, where it says be repealed within 24 hours of the effective date of stage three, could we not change that to say be repealed by starting, whatever the process is for the bylaw, to repeal the bylaw?
Yes, I guess it just depends on the timing of the council calendar, how quickly you could get that repealing bylaw to council. So whether you want it to be introduced after the province announces stage three, or whether you want to try to anticipate when that date will be. We can certainly bring a repealing bylaw to council.
So if I may, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make an amendment.
Go ahead.
The amendment would read something to the effect that once the province, that the temporary face covering bylaw, after the province has made their decision that council at the next meeting after that date, next council meeting, would be presented with a bylaw to repeal our mask bylaw. If you can capture that, Ryan or city clerk, I'm sorry.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would take that as a friendly. And if it's possible, when it's done, to just have that up on the screen, that'd be great. Thank you.
Yep, they're working on that now.
Yes, thank you. That amendment seems to capture what I'd like to do. That way we don't get hung up on words and process. Because it seems like sometimes we follow process and sometimes we choose not to follow process.
Okay, the amendment is now on the screen. I think it's accepted by the mover. Do we need to vote on the amendment? Second would probably be the mover. Councillor Higgin, I'm assuming you would second the amendment. Does anybody else want to second the amendment?
I will, Mayor Spearman.
Okay, moved. The amendment is moved by councillor Moro, seconded by councillor Higgin. Are you ready to vote on the amendment? And I just ask a question to the city solicitor. Is the amendment in keeping with the municipal government act?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any debate on the amendment?
I'm sorry, Mayor Spearman, I have a question as well. I'm just, I'm just wondering if if it's necessary to have this resolution stating this? Or if councillor Higgin can just bring a bylaw forward at the next council meeting? What's a proper process for that? Either someone from the solicitor or clerk's office? Can that just be brought forward as a bylaw to be debated?
I'll ask the city solicitor to comment.
So I'm not sure I quite understand councillor Mishairo. Do you just want this to say then, just delete all this and say, direct the city solicitor's office to prepare a repealing bylaw immediately? For the next council meeting?
Because what councillor Higgin was saying in earlier, in his whereas, is that we could have, go back to, we go to stage three as soon as June 28th. And our next council meeting is on June 29th. So we couldn't have a vote on it earlier than that anyway. So if you introduce a bylaw on June 29th, can it be, it would have to take unanimous consent of council to vote on all three parts of the bylaw one time anyway, wouldn't it?
Yes.
Right. So either way, if you want it passed on the 29th, you have to have all for all three parts of the bylaw to be passed. It has to be done unanimously. So there's a risk either way of it not passing that day, is all I'm saying. This doesn't, all this is saying is that you bring it forward, that means someone has to have it in hand, ready to present on the 29th anyway, just in case. Is that correct?
The way. So I guess the two differences is the way that you're proposing is that the bylaw is just brought forward immediately. And we're not waiting for a provincial announcement. But what's in the OBR up on the screen is that we wait for the government to make that announcement that we are in stage three. And I guess it's a question of timing. Are we, we're kind of playing a guessing game? If we just draft it and bring it forward on June 29th, and we're guessing that we're going to be in stage three by then? Or we can, we can wait. I guess it really does depend on the timing of how long after, if we're waiting for the provincial announcement, how long after it gets to council? We can do it either way.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any more questions? I see none. Debate on the amendment? Councillor Moro?
I'll save for close.
Any debate on the amendment? I'll ask councillor Moro to close.
I'm actually in for debate, Mayor Spearman.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Spearman, and thank you, my colleagues. To me, this seems very, very straightforward. And we've heard from the solicitor that this is something that we could put in. It does, it does fix the concerns, I guess, that or addresses the concerns of my colleagues. You know, when bringing this forward, it's, we brought forward this resolution here to, you know, the bylaw, I'm sorry, to educate. And it was said many, many times, to educate, to educate, to educate. And we need to remember something that our community stepped up. They stepped up to the education. They listened. And if we look at what we're at now, as I scroll through, we, in about a month's time, we dropped from over 500, I believe it's a month's time or slightly more, from over 550 cases down to 22 as of yesterday. It's, they've stepped to the, they've stepped to the table and they've done their job. And now it's time to reward them for what the community has done. They listened. They respected the bylaw. And now it's time to move forward. So with that, I would, I guess, sorry, it's councillor Moro, so I will just leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay, any further debate on the amendment? Councillor Moro to close?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Based on what I heard, his opposition was strictly process. We've been dealing with this forever. And we've all been talking about the experts, the experts, and we need to listen to the experts. All this is doing is saying that if the experts, Dr. Deena and her team, decide to get rid of the decide to, uh, get rid of the mandatory provincial mask bylaw, all this is suggesting is that we follow suit, and we do it in the proper manner, and that is by bringing a bylaw forward at the first meeting after the province makes their call. So you either support this, which means you're supporting the province and the experts, or if you don't support it, and you want to continue with our mask bylaw, then I guess you're the expert and, and, uh, forget what the province says. I'll call for the question.
Counselor Kaufman, the, this is just the amendment, right? So.
Yeah, I, I just need the point of clarification, um, because Counselor Morrow said if you support this, it's about ending it. If you don't support it, so I just need clarification. We're just voting on the amendment, which is a process question, really, correct?
That's correct. Uh, we would, the comments of Counselor Morrow really apply to the amended motion if this passes. Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, so, uh, I'll take that as Counselor Morrow's close on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote on the amendment.
Counselor Kaufman?
On the amendment, in favor?
Counselor Higgin?
In favor.
Counselor Morrow?
Favor.
Counselor Miyashiro?
Opposed.
Counselor Parker?
Favor.
Acting Mayor Croson?
In favor.
Deputy Mayor Campbell?
In favor.
Mayor Spearman?
Oppose.
Counselor Carlson?
In favor.
Carrie, seven to two. Thank you.
Okay, so now we have the amended motion. And it's on the screen. Any questions on the amended motion? Okay, we'll move on to debate.
Just have a, I have a question.
Counselor Campbell, go ahead.
Sure, I have a question too.
So, uh, we passed, I just want to be, be clear. So we passed this, uh, uh, as it, as it is there before us. We still have to vote on, on that, it, uh, when, when it's brought before as a, as a new bylaw, correct?
Correct.
So th- this is not, uh, just so that I understand that. Thank you very much.
Okay, Counselor Miyashiro?
Um, thank you, Mayor Spearman. So the question I have, I, I guess it'll be to the mover, uh, of the total, um, resolution is that stage three doesn't mention the, um, public health order on, um, public, uh, facial coverings. Stage three looks at restrictions, including banning indoor social gatherings, um, and isolation requirements for confirmed cases, and some protective measures in community care settings remain. But it doesn't mention that the, the public health order for masking will be, uh, rescinded. So I'm just wondering, um, if there's some wording you wanted to change on this? Cause it, they don't mention in stage three that I could find anything about the public health order for facial coverings.
So thank you for that question, Counselor Miyashiro. There's been much discussion at the daily updates, and it, and it is, does speak to, to masking. And, you know, that, that restrictions, restrictions we lifted, which is, which is masking. That is, is, is one of the restrictions, one of the, uh, health orders that's in currently right now. But that's something that could be discussed at the, uh, upcoming bylaw, and those questions are probably better suited for that time.
At the time that we want to discuss the bylaw. Is that, is that what you're saying? I'm just, I'm just seeking clarity.
Yep.
Any other questions? Move on to debate? Counselor Higgin?
I'll say for closing.
Any other debate? Any counselors wish to debate? Count, Deputy Mayor Campbell?
Thank you, your worship. I, yeah, I, I will, uh, I, I will accept this as, um, as proposed here. Based on the fact that, uh, new information could come forward. Uh, I mean, I, I absolutely, like so many, want to see a repealing of the mask bylaw, but, uh, also I want to be cognizant of the fact things could change. But, uh, this is a, this is a proactive state, and hopefully, uh, when this comes forward, after the stage three is announced, then we'll have the information that's appropriate, and that we can make the decision on, uh, repealing this bylaw at that time. So I will support this as it is.
Anyone else? Counselor Carlson?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. Uh, with the, the amendment made by Counselor Morrow, uh, I, I find myself more able to support this, because rather than I say, yep, we're repealing it no matter what, we're saying, no, once the province, uh, repeals their bylaws or restrictions or orders, uh, we will bring something forward to look at. And so if that is what this is saying, um, I think I can support, uh, considering it, uh, at such a time. But, uh, so I appreciate the, uh, the amendment.
Okay, thank you. I won't be supporting it. Uh, my recollection is completely different. Uh, yes, we were looking at educating, but I remember, uh, the, the direction for, uh, provincial masking was political. It wasn't initially proposed by the C, uh, the medical officer of health. Provincial masking only came in, uh, in December of 2020, when, uh, the second stage was getting out of hand. And it looked like our, uh, medical, our, our hospitals were going to be overrun. Similarly, in the, uh, in the third stage, restrictions were only brought in. When I actually met with the premier in the last week of March, when our numbers far exceeded, uh, those in other cities in the, in the province and other communities, that was when we went over 500. It was the last week of March. And the premier was in Lethbridge, and I met with him and the, the local medical officer of health, and asked for support. Things looked serious in Lethbridge. And really, it was the, it was really before vaccinations were widely available, but certainly nothing was, was forthcoming. But I, I, I remember when mask bylaws were first being considered by Lethbridge, Calgary, Edmonton. The premier said that, uh, he was not going to impose mask bylaws. Uh, he was going to let municipalities do it if they wished to, which we did. That's how I recall it taking place, and we enacted ours last August. And I think it, for the most part, it helped us minimize the second wave, but not the third wave with the, with the variants. And I think, uh, certainly, uh, people not abiding by the mask, mask bylaw was a contribu- contributing factor. And we had nothing but complaints from people in our community who felt they weren't safe in retail spaces in the city of Lethbridge, and in community spaces in the city of Lethbridge, because people were not abiding by the mask bylaw. And some of the confusion and lack of enforcement contributed, and that's pro- province-wide, lack of support for masking, uh, contributed to the second and third waves. So I think we need to be consistent, uh, in the sense that, uh, we need to be sure that we have the evidence, and we see other cities saying, hey, we're not going to look at repealing mask bylaws until, at least 70% of the, our populations are fully vaccinated, and then we'll start to look at it. This seems to be premature, and at this time, I can't support it. Counselor Miyashiro?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. And, and I do think that the move of bringing this forward, I, I think the wording is just off. And I, I can't support it because, um, it's not just the, um, stage three. It is, it is also the resentment of the public health order around facial coverings. The, the other thing that's really, um, disheartening in, in our province right now is that even people that have had, uh, two, two shots of the vaccine, of any vaccine, have fallen victim to COVID once again because of the variants. And, and yes, they don't get quite as sick, but they still do get sick, and they still can be hospitalized. And, and I just think that if we wait till 70% of the province, um, or even 70% of our region has two shots, then we would stand a way better chance of fighting this off over the long term. And facial coverings are the least restrictive things that we can do to keep each other safe. So I will not support this.
Anyone else? I'll ask Counselor Higgin to close.
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. Um, I, I guess I, I, I look at this a little bit differently in that, you know, out there in the community, I know there's, there's comments that, uh, uh, I'm against masks, and, and many that are against masks. That is definitely not true. I look at the numbers, and a comment that came up from, from yourself, Mayor Spearman, was that, um, uh, because of the, uh, the, the, the mass concerns that were out there, that this actually contributed to a second and third wave is completely wrong. There is zero proof, and, and I would wish for you to send me any information that it's because of this that we got into the second, third wave, because that is 100% not true. I would believe that.
Provincial, provincially documented.
Mayor Spearman, I'm doing my debate. Thank you. There's nothing to state that this contributed to the second and third wave, as you indicated. But that aside, I just, I just, I want to make sure that we all understand that us sitting around this horseshoe, last time I checked, we do not have medical degrees. We don't, we're not, uh, experts in this field. So we do turn to the Alberta Health, to, to the division of the provincial government, the Alberta, Alberta Health, to, to listen to what they have to state regarding our health. Health is, is a, is a provincial mandate. That is not a municipal mandate. So we should be following, we definitely should be following the experts. And, and this is definitely something that is, is, uh, will not be, be lifted easily. The, the experts watch our city on a daily basis, if not an hourly basis, we are told. And if there's concerns for, for the community, there, this is, this is not going to go forward. They, they will, will, uh, the stage three will not happen if it's something that's going to, to be of concern of health in the community. I, I, I want to emphasize something. This is, again, we spoke about the, the, how, how this, this bylaw first came in. And I know we spoke to it as a, a way to educate our community. My gosh, they've, they've, they've stood up to the cause, and there's not a single restaurant, and not a single building, uh, business that I go into that I do not see someone masked, and it was not that way previously. So our community, we need to give the shout, and the thanks to our community for what they've done. Congratulate them for, for following, um, this, this, uh, uh, bylaw and the, the health order that was put in by the province. Again, thank you to the community. This is something that, um, honestly, it was not easy. We don't like to wear masks. None of us do like to wear masks, I'm sure. I, I hope I'm speaking on behalf of everyone, that it's not something we like to do. We did it because it was, it was, uh, uh, put forward for, for a resolution to try to, or through a, sorry, a, a, uh, bylaw to limit the numbers. Now, the numbers were at zero when we put it in. I mean, we, we say what we do. Again, I'm not against masks. We are now down to numbers of, of, uh, 22 in our community. Let's congratulate the community for what they've done and the great work they've done. And with that, I'll call for the vote.
Okay, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Your worship. Counselor Higgin?
In favor.
Counselor Morrow?
Favor.
Counselor Miyashiro?
Opposed.
Counselor Parker?
Favor.
Acting Mayor Croson?
Opposed.
Deputy Mayor Campbell?
Favor.
Mayor Spearman?
Opposed.
Counselor Carlson?
Opposed.
And Counselor Kaufman?
Opposed.
That's lost, five to four.
Thank you.
So we're going to bylaws now?
Okay, we're now going to move to the public hearing at four o'clock. It's six minutes from now. So at this point, we'll recess. Uh, next stage is, uh, the public, is the public hearing, and then we can deal with resolutions after the public hearing. So we have a five-minute break. I call the public hearing for bylaw six-two-seven-seven. Amendment to bylaw five-seven-nine-eight. The West Lethbridge Employment Centre area restructure plan, or structure plan. The procedure for this hearing will be, we will begin by calling upon Tyson Bylaw, senior community planner, to provide the background to the case. Those else who wish to speak on this bylaw will then be called upon. We will then ask three times if there is anybody else who wishes to make a presentation. City council will then have the opportunity to ask questions of any of the presenters. The hearing will then be closed. Consideration of second and third reading will be made by city council immediately following the public hearing. I now call upon Tyson Boylan to provide the background to the case.
Thank you, Eureship and members of council, and good afternoon. This is bylaw six-two-seven-seven. It's a proposed amendment to the West Lethbridge Employment Centre area structure plan. Next slide, please. So my presentation will follow the outline above, ending with our department's recommendation to city council. Byron Bazunas from Infrastructure is also here to help answer questions about future servicing in the area. Next slide, please.
Okay, if we can just hold for a second, we got a technical issue.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Okay, very good.
We can proceed, thank you.
So my presentation will follow the outline above, ending with our department's recommendation to city council. And Byron Bazunas from Infrastructure is also here to help answer questions about future servicing in the area. Next slide, please. So the applicant is WSP Canada Incorporated on behalf of the owners of two-seventy University Drive, which is located within the planning area of the West Lethbridge Employment Centre ASP. The applicant will be speaking after I am done as well. The purpose of this is the applicant has expressed the desire to develop a mini storage facility on the site. The proposed amendment to the ASP will allow more of these parcels to be utilized for interline uses than is currently allowed under the policies of the ASP. Next slide. So just to orient yourselves to the West Lethbridge Employment Centre, it is located in the northern part of West Lethbridge. And shown here is a hatched area. Next slide. So this next map provides a little bit better context in terms of the part of the ASP that will be affected. This shows the current boundaries of the ASP with a blue star showing the location of two-seventy University Drive. This parcel lies between University Drive and the railway as well. Next slide. So included in this slide are all existing planning documents that are relevant to this proposed amendment. The West Lethbridge Employment Centre ASP was first approved in two thousand thirteen and then amended in two thousand eighteen. There's been no outline plans that have yet been adopted in the area. And the proposed, the proposed development is a little bit different as the zoning is already in place, but is subject to an overarching area structure plan. This means that for the applicant's proposal, they would need to amend the ASP, but no rezoning is required in this instance. And this is very typical in terms of our usual planning process. Next slide. So for interim land uses, what are they exactly? These were laid out in the West Lethbridge Employment Centre ASP as a full-service urban development of some parcels here is far into the future. And this gives area landowners the ability to have some development in the meantime. The ASP continues, or contains policies for interim uses so that they will not interfere with the long-term plans for urban development of the area. And this represents a balance. Next slide. So the West Lethbridge Employment Centre ASP comprises an area that is mainly in an agricultural setting, but is planned to transition to an urban centre in the future. Many of the, many of the existing uses here were originally developed when it was in the county and also in the absence of servicing. Interim uses were based on some other similar land uses that were developed prior to when the ASP was adopted. And these seem like a good model or bridge between the existing development and the proposed urban development that is planned for the area. The interim land uses are intended to be only temporary until the land has been adequately planned with an outline plan in place and utility servicing becoming available. Next slide. So the two policies that the applicant proposes to change are summarized above here. They are proposing a maximum utilization of seventy-five percent instead of twenty percent. A setback of twenty-five meters from University Drive, a place of two hundred meters, so that they can utilize more of their property for interim development. The existing limit of twenty percent was put in place so that interim uses cannot compose a substantial portion of a given property. If it is over this, you begin to get development that is premature prior to sufficient planning and servicing being available. The setback of two hundred meters from University Drive was established as University Drive is considered in the ASP as a gateway corridor into the city with policies to ensure its aesthetics and also to function as a multi-use transportation. It is intended to be the location of large format retail development and two hundred meters was chosen as this is the typical width of these types of land uses. Next slide, please. So what this slide illustrates here is what the existing and the proposed policies of the ASP would allow. And you can see the difference here in terms of scale for two-seventy University Drive. The map on the left here shows what the existing policies would allow. The red area is where development could not occur and the green area is where it could occur. This is based on the two hundred meter setback from University Drive. Under this, the area where there could be a mini storage facility is zero-point-eight-six hectares. And for perspective, the existing mini storage facility on the opposite side of the train tracks is slightly smaller and zero-point-seven-seven hectares. The map on the right shows an example of what the proposed amended policies in the ASP could potentially allow. The green area indicates a maximum of seventy-five percent of the total parcel that could be developed while maintaining the twenty-five meter setback from University Drive, which translates into four-point-four-seven hectares on this parcel. Next slide, please. So for the evaluation and the analysis, the interim land uses are intended to be in place until the full urban development is possible. However, there's no legislative mechanism to enforce this. It is up to the property owner whether they want to redevelop or not. It is very possible that the proposed development would remain indefinitely. The outline plan for the broader area has yet to be complete. No comprehensive stormwater management plan has yet been drafted and no grading has yet been done. Administration has concerns as to how the stormwater will be managed both onsite and onto adjacent lands. Next slide, please. So there's currently no legal access available for the proposed development at this time and no city water is currently available to the site, which represents a risk for firefighting purposes. And as well, other parcels in the planning area are larger and could have accommodated the size of the applicant's proposal under the current ASP policies. Next slide, please. So above here is the transportation map from the ASP. And as you can see in this map, the parcel in question is outlined in a black dotted line and the ASP boundary is shown as the red dotted line. Future collector roadways are shown as green and arterial roadways such as University Drive are shown in blue. Shown as a dotted orange line, the ASP identifies a future above-grade crossing of the railway at either one of two locations near the parcel, which will eventually be needed to help alleviate, or alleviate future traffic congestion further south at the intersection of University Drive and Gary. In addition, other roadways are also planned to cross through the parcel as well. There is a strong possibility that the proposed development will be a serious constraint to the construction of these rotaries and other infrastructure which will serve the broader area. Next slide, please. So the application was also evaluated in terms of different overarching planning documents. It conflicts with the MDP policies that are listed above here, which seek to discourage non-contiguous development prior to proper planning being in place. The proposed reduction in the two-hundred-meter setback from University Drive also conflicts with the proposed, or the policies for good quality architecture and streetscaping in the MDP. This includes elements such as building frontages, landscaping, signage, paving materials and walkways that in combination make up the visual image of the street. Next slide, please. And finally, the proposed reduction in the two-hundred-meter setback also conflicts with the desire to create pedestrian-friendly commercial areas as stated in council's strategic plan. Next slide. So for notification, mails were sent out to all the, or all the landowners in the ASP planning area as it is a text amendment that could have implications for them. Ads appeared in the Herald and notification was also on the city's website. I see five responses asking what the proposed amendment meant with a few individuals expressing support for the proposal. I don't see any submission on today's agenda, but I believe that there are some speakers that want to speak after me. As required by the IDP, this was also sent to Lethbridge County and they expressed no concern of the proposed amendment. Next slide, please. So in conclusion, the proposed ASP amendment is not consistent with the existing approved higher-order plans for the area. The proposed amendment will be a constraint for future permanent development in the area. The applicant would get all of the benefits of development without contributing to their fair share of the costs. I should also state that under the current ASP policies, the property owner still has the ability to use some of the parcel for interim uses until the outline plan is approved. Next slide, please. And it is our recommendation that city council refuse bylaw six-two-seven-seven. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Boylan. I now call upon the applicant to make a presentation. Is the applicant present?
I am.
Okay, thank you.
Eureship and members of council, thank you for the opportunity. I want to touch on four or five key points with respect to the application. Certainly, if I glaze over something or don't get into it in enough detail, please feel free to ask me some questions. It's a lot of, I guess, information to squeeze into a short period of time here. So as, my name is Trent Purvis. I'm the regional manager for WSP Canada. We are the applicant on behalf of the landowner. The landowner is a numbered company, but I just wanted to make everyone aware that behind the numbered company is a family business, a Lethbridge business, a number of businesses, I suppose, that have been working in Lethbridge for over thirty years, for near thirty years, I suppose, developing commercial land, developing residential projects, developing industrial lands in the city. My client acquired this property not because of short-term development potential, but because of the long-term plan. So with respect to non-compliance to the higher-order plans, my client plans to be in full compliance with the area structure plan, the municipal development plan and the SSRP, and plans to wait until services are extended to the property so that it can be developed in a contiguous manner per the policies of council and policies of the MDP. This isn't about the long-term plan. This is about what my client can do in the short term as an interim development that adds value to the property, bringing it to its highest and best use based on the servicing that exists today with no new investment from the city. This is a grade-A commercial site in the long term and that is what they're interested in developing. When it comes time and services are extended to the parcel, this interim use, they will just be removed. They, there's no way on earth, I guess, to quote one of my clients, that they would leave this in place when they have an opportunity to develop what their vision is for the site. So there are a number of items that have to occur before the ultimate plan can be implemented. An outline plan is needed, requiring cooperation between six or eight or more landowners. There's a capital improvement project in the city's plan noted for the year twenty-twenty-nine, when the road will be improved and services will be extended to the property. After all those things occur and then land use as well, then they will develop to the ultimate plan. At this point in time, that is nine, eight, nine years out at the minimum and they would like to do something of value on the property. So Mr. Boylan also mentioned actually that there is a DC bylaw on the project from nineteen ninety-one that allows the use that is being proposed as a discretionary use. It's the ASP that came in in two thousand thirteen that brought these, I guess, constraints to interim uses. So part of the issues you saw on the map maybe is that these setbacks and site coverage requirements don't leave a reasonable amount of land to do anything with at the back corner, partially because this is a triumvial piece of property. Those requirements might make more sense further down University Drive, but it leaves basically nothing for interim development. And so that's why the application has been made. So there's a number of sort of technical issues which we have considered in detail. Things like stormwater management, drainage. We have no concerns that we won't be able to address those things at the normal stage, which is at a development permit stage. Not having any impact on the downstream lands. That is pretty typical of the process regarding fire protection as well. This is what is called a low occupancy building. And so whether sprinklers are required or not, obviously sprinklers can't be put on a property if there's no water mains. And so I think that's the concern. But if you look in the county, anywhere in rural Canada, you'll see projects like this that have proceeded and met the building code. And we think that we can do so as well. And we think that we can do so as well. Even further down, further north on University Drive, there are low occupancy buildings that have been built under the same situation. So I just wanted to close on the why. I guess, why should council consider this application? Why should council say yes? My applicant is most interested in the long-term plan, the long-term opportunities on this parcel, but thinks maybe it's, there's an opportunity to invest in the land now, to invest in Lethbridge now, to develop a business, to create a return on investment, to create services for residents that are needed. And in the process, increase the assessment on the, on the property and, and some increased tax revenue to the city of Lethbridge as well, maybe in the sixty to eighty thousand dollars range prior to when development can actually proceed in, in the late twenty twenties and, and early twenty thirties. Again, I'm available for questions should, should any have arisen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Purvis. Question period will come after all presenters. So I'd just like to remind presenters, you have five minutes to speak. Are there any members of the public that wish to make a presentation on this matter? Now, I thought I saw two names. Okay, is Mr. or Lauren Patzer here or online? Mr. Len Hale. Mr. Len Hale here. Yep, thank you.
Letting me talk. Basically, I'm.
I think you come over to the podium here and there should be a microphone. If you could speak into the microphone, my colleagues online will be able to hear you.
All right, thank you for that. New to this process and I'm here more to learn than to present. I have a property within the West Lethbridge Employment Centre. It's over on West Side Drive, bounded by the rail tracks and Arch Mount Cemetery, the little trailer court and the storage yard there, if that gives you anything. It's a very small property, less than one acre. And I face similar issues with that low twenty percent development rate. I've been told verbally that included in that is not only structures, but parking and roadways. That makes it very punitive. In terms of being able to develop anything, I don't understand why they would be considered structures that would have to be removed. They're very easily managed within a site grading plan. So that's where I'm at. I support Mr. Purvis and their development. I think the city should be doing everything they can to encourage development of their properties within reasons that I understand the long-term development plans. But it's to the point where West Lethbridge doesn't even have a lumberyard. You can't get a two by four without coming across the river to go to Lowe's because nobody wants to build on the west side with the onerous restrictions. So that's kind of my, my two cents worth. I hope you take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other member of the public that wishes to make a presentation on this matter? I'm going to ask two more times. Is there any, any, any other member of the public that wishes to make a presentation on this matter? And I'll ask Mr. Westerson, anybody online looking to make a presentation? For a third and final time, is there any member of the public that wishes to make a presentation on this matter? Hearing no other presenters, it is now time for city council to ask questions of the presenters. Start with Councilor Miyashiro.
Thank you very much, Mayor Spearman. I have a question. I'm not sure who needs to answer this. Mr. Bazounis may be about the stormwater issue. So this property has no ability to, for stormwater catchment at this current time. Is that correct?
I'll let Mr. Bazounis answer that.
Thank you.
Councilor Marashino, the, the stormwater system is the natural system that exists there today. So without any planning, it will go wherever it happens to go. And there probably will be some amount of, of storage onsite provided if, if they do develop it. The, the issue is, is that when you build things out of sequence, like in this case, you create huge constraints for future development. So if this place is here and for whatever reason, the ownership changes and the new owners don't want to proceed with the ultimate development, now you have a piece of land at a critical stage that you have to skip around. And so this is, is a really, really difficult thing. If it goes ahead, it will create constraints. Unless, of course, the owner manages to hold on to it and, and follows through.
Right. So, so what, what you're saying, because I need clarity on this. So what you're saying is that once they build, if they, whatever they build there, and if they build anything there and they decide to build a catchment or if they decide to dig a hole and let the water into the hole, there's not a lot we can do about it right now because we don't have a storm catchment system on that side of the, of the road. Is that correct?
Yeah, we, we, we do not have stormwater infrastructure there today. So whatever they would do would be on their own onsite system, releasing to the natural ditches and, and coolies down the hill. There's no city storm system there.
There, that means there's also no wastewater collection or waste.
There is no, yes, there's no sanitary sewer. Under the, if their outline plan did proceed, the offsite levy would make investments potentially as, as soon as twenty twenty nine is when it's in the offsite levy, to bring water distribution across the tracks, to bring stormwater planning to the area and to also bring sanitary sewer. That would also coincide with redevelopment of University Drive. Again, this is a pre-piece. It's the first piece. And so if this piece is developed and delayed for some reason, then the next person further north, the next developer further north has to figure out how to get past this, this development in whatever state it is in.
But it's not the only piece because Burnco is there as well.
Burnco is on the other side of the, the railway line.
Right. Oh, okay. So they're, they're not.
Yeah, this, this is northeast of the rail track.
Okay, great. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Councilor Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. To Mr. Boylan, sorry, my screen, my camera's off because I'm split screening with the document here. Under the implications, and forgive me if you, if you identified this in the presentation, I'm, I'm not, as they say, I'm not quite picking up what you're laying down here in terms of the, the the true impact of, of what's being proposed versus what the counterargument is. Under financial, it says premature development under the proposed ASP amendment will lead to increased servicing costs. What's the increased servicing costs?
I believe that's more long-term servicing costs, so servicing costs for the long-term development in the area. Byron, do you have anything else to add to that?
So it, part, part of what happens when a site like this develops is that in its interim development state, it doesn't pay offsite levies. And so the offsite levies on, on what is proposed, four point four, is roughly one point two million dollars. So what happens then is infrastructure needs to be extended past the site, but you no longer are able to collect levies from that site as easily because somebody has already invested in, in the site and it kind of tends to remain with whatever it's got on it. And so then the remaining developers in the area have to somehow cover that cost or the offsite levy somehow has to find a way to stay afloat while making those investments to skip over this, this piece of land.
Oh, okay. I, I guess if, if we're looking at interim development, correct? I'm missing, am I missing something here? Interim development?
It is, yes, correct.
We, we, am I hearing that the city of Lethbridge has no capacity or no ability to support interim development with everybody understanding from day one that it's interim development and that there are requirements from our infrastructure, from, from offsite levy, from a number of things that will arise at a future date. That's what I'm hearing is we don't have the ability to provide that assurance to someone or, or to, to enter into an understanding of something of that nature. I, I'm, this one is a challenge because I'm not, I'm not understanding what the barrier is here. What the, what the, what the fear is of interim development.
So the, the area structure plan allows for interim development. There's various criteria for that, two which is the, is the maximum utilization of twenty percent of the site for all parcels in the area. And the second one that's proposed to be amended here today is the two hundred meter setback for any interim development from University Drive. Because there is, there's a desire in the ASP to have more, have more aesthetics with that, have a function as a multi-use transportation corridor as well.
Yeah, and, and, and that I'm understanding. I guess it's, it's getting from, from those two things on an interim basis to what it is that we're trying to achieve long-term. There's no, there's no incremental step is what I'm hearing. Because I think if somebody's putting something and I, I recognize land use, I recognize, you know, the fact that we can approve something interim now, but ten years down the road, things have changed, people have changed, whether the case may be. But do we not have the ability to, to say for interim use? Yes, but recognize this may end up costing you in the long run because we have, we're going to need to do this with infrastructure. We're going to have this additional requirement in the future. I, I, that's what I can't get my mind around. We, we seem to be. Yeah, go ahead.
Maybe I, maybe it can help. It, it's not that we, we know that those things will happen, but there is no opportunity, once something is built, for the, the owner, for the city to come and compel any kind of change. So if something is built on that property today, if in the future, it's the right time to develop and the outline plan's all in place, but the owner doesn't want to do anything at that point, there's no way to compel them to, to change or tear down or, or reassess or, or do anything on their land.
And maybe, maybe I can just add a little more to that too, Councilor Kaufman. In the absence of being able to compel somebody to actually move from an interim use to a permanent use, the, the reason the ASP is structured the way it is, is that in order to, in, because there's no legal authority to, to, to bind somebody to undo something, the, the alternative is presented in the way it is in the ASP insofar as if you minimize the extent of, of what that interim use is, it is in this period of time between now, outline plan and full servicing, you're more likely to get the, the higher and better use in the future. And for somebody, a, a current landowner to say, you're right, I, 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 that the higher better use is now worth it and I can abandon this interim use that I've got. So that's that balancing act that, that Tyson had mentioned earlier that was addressed given the, the legal parameters that exist and the, and the, and the levers that the community has today.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Spearman.
Anyone else with questions from council? Councilor Croson?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. So let's look at this from a risk management perspective. If council approves this bylaw and as we say, there's no city water there for firefighting. If there is, you know, a fire, something goes wrong, where's the liability? If we don't have stormwater, something goes wrong, where's the liability? So can anyone lead me through that? So if we put up our hand and we approve this bylaw and we know that there are these issues, who has the liability on this?
I'll, I'll take a shot at that. So in terms of stormwater management, it depends on where the problem occurs, right? So if it's downstream from the site, I don't anticipate that that's a big risk in terms of impacts on, on Bridge Drive or things. But there might be something that happens and we would then deal with it. And it would be, in any case, very hard to identify whether it came from the site or, or not. In terms of, of fire and, and, and water supply, well, that's all covered under the, the landowner's insurance. So it would be their, their risk when it would come back to the city of Lethbridge.
So there could be no greater risk in an interim use than it, than a permanent use? Or is there a greater risk from the city's perspective?
From, from the city's perspective, the, the risk you're facing is that the investment in this property makes the next increment to the higher and better use, the ultimate use, too small for anybody to do anything with it. And then you're left with this piece of land that never actually changes into its ultimate use at the entrance or gateway to the community.
No, I appreciate that. I mean, that's, I think, while planning and development is against this because you're trying to get to the final stage. But in the interim, does it raise the risk of the city if we do an interim measure? Do you have greater liability or not?
On, on an interim basis, it's not any significantly different risk today as with, with this thing.
Okay, so the lack, the lack of water and stuff doesn't actually increase the risk of the city?
The, Councilor Croson, the way we mitigate that in the current unserviced sense and with the current planning rules in place is through the development permit process. And, and, and there will, the city will insist even in an interim basis that there be a, a, an acceptable level of fire protection, that whatever is, whatever structures get constructed are to the current codes in an unserved setting such as this. Access, that it needs to be legal access and it needs to be properly constructed in terms of its, the, the connection to University Drive. So that, there are additional steps that we put in place, which are, which apply to anybody that's doing development to try to reduce those risks to the city, I, I, because I think that's your point, and continue to make sure the risk belongs with the right people and in this case, the, the private landlord.
Okay, can I ask the landowner the question or the person representing the company? Are you aware that any of the risks that you're taking on would be up to you in the interim?
The applicant is, is fully aware of the, of the risks of, of, well, we're the applicant. I guess my, my client is fully aware of the risks of, of interim and long-term development. As, as I said, they're very, very experienced and, and, and fully aware of those risks. I mean, there's, there's, there's a building on the property now, a house, an older house that's been there for quite some time that, that I guess when you would look at buying a property, you would look at that as, as some risk as well. So they've fully have their eyes open about the level of risk and fully recognize that, that there are more steps that they will need to submit a development permit, meet all the city requirements and meet all the codes and standards of the develop, the building permit as well. And then also negotiate joint access with their neighbor who the, 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 the access to the site is, so everyone knows this sort of through someone else's property happens to be the city of Lethbridge. And so we didn't go to the end of that process before ensuring we could start. But we, we are confident that we could sit down and, and work out a joint use access and, and also make improvements to the intersection as the city would, would need.
And one more question if I may. Of course, we're looking at the trade-off here. We want the interim use. We hear what administration is saying. What's the benefit to the community? I know you talked a bit about the assess. You talked a bit about the assess, et cetera? But what would be the benefit to the community if we agreed to this?
Um, well, it's, it's, uh, development that can happen now. I think we all understand that it is going to take some time to go through the next phases of planning steps? And, uh, inf- extension of infrastructure in order to get to the vision that, that, that the city and that we all have, I guess, for, for this, um, for this area of the city? This is, allows for some investment now and some services to be provided. They're also have their eyes very wide open about? The value of land? And, and I'll tell you the way that a business would look at that? Is when the services get extended, uh, to in front of the property and maybe even onto the property? And the road gets improved and we create this great corridor for pedestrians and, and, and vehicle traffic? The assessed value of that land will go up like, that is, uh, documented and that is for sure. And so that, at that point, you would look at? Okay, do I continue to pay higher taxes on this land for a little bit of self-storage? Or do I, do I go market it for what it is, which is a Class A commercial property in the city of Lethbridge? Which I, I, I don't know where you would have as much, uh, traffic access a- and a prominent location? So, um? Regardless of who owns it, I, I can't imagine them, uh, as a business, I guess? Not at least looking at that very seriously once in, you know, in twenty twenty-nine, twenty thirty, whenever it is? Uh, the improvements come along.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Spearman.
Councilor Kaufman?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Spearman. Can I ask the, the question this way? Maybe this, this will help me understand where we're at and, and where we're trying to approach. And I recognize that we're, we're trying to be good stewards of the land and this is a gateway site? And we want it to be sexy when people enter our community? So what's the minimum that's required? From what is, from the applications in front of us? What would be the minimum required for this to be moving forward? Mister, Mister Boylan?
So do we need to meet the, um, the policies, um, the policies, um, of the area structure plan? That includes, um, includes interim development utilizing under twenty percent of the site? Being, uh, two hundred meters away from the site as well too? Um, they can't have, um, they can't have very much in terms of site improvements? Um, all structures on the site have to be relatively easy to move off of the site? So like a mini storage facility? Um, under twenty percent of the site would probably be about the maximum amount? Or the, um, the maximum intensity of the site right now?
So, okay, so, so your, your short answer is no amendments to the ASP and play with in the rules in front of us?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, the, the, um, the policies in the ASP, um, they were thought of, um? They were given, they were given a great, um, a great deal of thought. Um, and we looked, looked at, um, looked at other comparable, um, developments and things like that. When we considered them, we also, um? We also get feedback from internal stakeholders and external stakeholders as well too.
Okay, thank you. Has, you know, the, the, um? Employment, uh, the Employment Center has, you know, was approved in, in, oh, I see Ms. Gearing's hand up? I don't know if, if Ms. Gearing has something to add to that as well?
I do, Councilor Kaufman, um, just in regards to what Mr. Boylan was saying? Because of the amount of parcels in the West Lethbridge Employment Center? We did take, um, rather a one-size-fits-all approach in terms of determining the twenty percent? Um, we did survey other in, um, other developments such as what's happening in Southeast Lethbridge? In terms of how much of those properties were developed, what seemed to be, uh, typical in that case? And in designing that policy, it was meant for all of the properties. So we didn't look at an individual basis, right? In terms of what this property could do versus that property? Um, I think one of the, the issues here that we haven't really talked about in terms of, uh, development proceeding? Is the fact that there's already a direct control bylaw in place? And we don't have the ability to affect the direct control bylaw? So then what we are looking at is only a development permit? Um, and it's, uh? How the land use bylaw is structured? Um, it's not really designed for these type of uses? In a rural situation that aren't serviced? In terms of the kinds of, uh, conditions we can put on that development permit as a discretionary use? In terms of the ability to really put a service agreement in place? Um, you might remember for, um, one of the parcels we dealt with, uh, we're a really large apartment building? We actually wrote this condition for the service agreement into the DC bylaw? Okay, um, and this is because any condition on the development permit can be appealed? So I think when you look from administration's perspective, we don't have a lot of levers to ensure that? That the process goes appropriately just because this is going out of step and there already is a direct control bylaw in place? That we can't, uh, we can't change? So just to give you a little bit more context, we don't have as many tools as we would in a normal situation.
Okay, thank you. Um, you were doing really well, uh, providing clarity for me and then we sort of did this and headed off a different role. I, so I need to ask the follow-up question if I can, Mayor Spearman? We don't have the ability to affect the DC bylaw?
That's correct.
Forgive my ignorance? But DC bylaw is established by city council?
That's correct.
Okay? Why can we not amend the DC bylaw?
So that would.
I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Gearing, I'm, I'm missing something, obviously.
Sure, the applicant has rights under that DC bylaw? And just by changing the policies in the ASP, he's met his DC bylaw? It, it automatically reverts to being a development permit situation because of the way the bylaw is written? So unless the applicant wants to come forward and change the DC bylaw? I mean, as administration, we've never taken that approach where we'll amend someone's bylaw for them? We, we've just never done it that way. I'm, I'm not sure we do have, uh, legal counsel on the line, but it's certainly something that would be atypical for us? In terms of that process?
Okay, thank you. I had another question, but it's long gone because of that, so not a problem. Thank you, Gearing, thank you, Mr. Boylan, thank you, Mr. Spearman.
Hey, I've got a procedural issue for council. We invited people to make presentations? I called three times for, uh, people to make presentations and the time has passed? Uh, Mister Lauren Patzer, who had registered to make a presentation, has shown up in the last ten minutes? He's now in the chambers and would like to make a presentation? Is there any objection from council if we allow Mister Patzer to make a presentation at this stage?
Mayor Spearman?
Yes?
Can we just ensure with, uh, our legal counsel that that doesn't affect? The public hearing? Uh, I have no problem with it, but I would hate us to go outside of legislation? And have the hearing called into question because of that? So if, if we can get?
It should be, it should be fine.
Should be no objection according to, no, no issue according to our legal advice?
If there's no objections, it's, it should be fine. Yeah.
Thank you.
Does any member of council object to Mister Patzer making a presentation?
I guess as long as we're not creating precedent that people can swan around? Or partway through a public hearing?
I think we would ask the same question each and every time? Uh, Ms. Shigahiro, is, is this precedent setting?
I don't think so. Um, you, there's no? No decisions have been made. You're not being asked to revisit any decisions, so this, it should be fine.
Okay, thank you. Okay, hearing no objections from council, I will allow Mister Patzer to present for five minutes. Mister Patzer, if you'd like to come forward and make a presentation?
Mayor Spearman, can I just add something?
Yes?
Just, I was just gonna say if, if, uh, after Mister Patzer does his presentation, if maybe you could ask again the, the three times, just, just to be fair, is, if that's okay? I don't know if that's, if it's needed, but I just think it would be, it would be fair just to, to ask again.
Okay, the difference is that Mister Patzer pre-registered? So?
Okay.
Okay? But I can, I can do that if you like, yeah. Please proceed, Mister Patzer, your five minutes begins now. Thank you.
Mayor? Counselors and all in attendance? Thank you for letting me present. I have no good reason for my tardiness? Other than I simply forgot until about twenty after the hour? And so I took a chance that I could still get in? And I thank you that I'm being given this opportunity? I live at two seven five University Drive West? Which is directly across from the property, uh, being mentioned on University Drive? Uh, my property consists of about fifty-two acres of land? It extends from University Drive back to the Cooley Edge and down to the old three A highway? So obviously what is happening here has a direct impact on my property? I am, uh? Not adverse to things happening in this neck of the woods, so to speak? Uh, I feel in some ways? That us as property owners have been trapped by this area structure plan? That was put in place some ten years ago? And, uh, also trapped a little bit by the economics of the time? And as a result, uh, feel that, uh? We are not able to move forward and, uh, this land has already been in a bit of a vacuum for upwards of? Fifty or sixty years, which is when the land that I possess was brought into the city limits? So fifty, sixty years, ladies and gentlemen? Is a long time to have be on a property that was annexed with the purpose of some development at some future point? Uh, looking at the city, it appears that most of our planning takes place with about a forty-year window? And I would suggest that probably this annexation, uh, should not have happened when it did? With that as a backdrop, we, we're now trying to move forward and I have a new neighbor who wants to do this development. I am, I wanna be on record that I am not opposed to that happening? Uh, and, uh, encourage council to consider it? My challenge and my reason for requesting to come forward? Is that? Uh, you are giving consideration for one parcel of land within this area structure plan to have an exemption? And ladies and gentlemen, I would like to suggest? That what is good for the goose? Is good for the gander? In other words, it is my hope that if and when? I want to do something with my property? That the same consideration you are giving to this property will be extended to mine? Otherwise, I consider this to be a very prejudicial undertaking vis a vis my property? And I, I leave you with that. Thank you, I appreciate that you allowed me to speak.
Thank you, I hope that you can stay, there may be questions based on your presentation? Thank you. Okay, yeah? Is there any other member of the public that wishes to speak at this time? For a second time, is there any member of the public that wishes to make a presentation at this time? For a third and final time, is there any, any member of the public that wishes to make a presentation at this time? Okay, I hear none? So we will continue with questions, we have not made any decisions at this point? Further questions from council? I, I do have a question for Mister Patzer, actually, now that he's raised, come forward? Uh, if you could come forward, please, Mister Patzer? If I understand the essence of your presentation? And you're saying basically all land in the, in this area structure plan should be treated the same? If your land was afforded the same rates as the proposal, uh? The exemptions, would that enhance the value of your land if you chose to sell it?
I am of the opinion that it would, yes.
And likely that would apply to any other land within the same area structure plan?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Miyashiro?
Um, sorry, Mister Patzer, I have a question for you as well? You, you raise an interesting issue about, um, land ownership in that area and annexation? Um, if I'm? Remembering that the annexation happened because, um, because of University of Lethbridge for, for, for the most part? When that land was annexed and people bought it, they, they weren't expecting residential development, I don't believe, as quickly as, as it happened on the west side? Or as extensively at that point? So I, what I'm trying to say is that anyone that bought land at the far northern extent of, of the west side? Wasn't expecting that land to be built out anytime soon? So I think it's a bit of a, a, a misdirection to say that, you know, people bought it and we've been waiting for it to be developed for fifty years? I'm, I'm not sure if that's exactly the case because we've only, we've only developed in the last ten years? Um, out to as far as it's gone? So I, I wanna know a couple of things is do you know of any landowners in that, in that area? That, that were expecting development, um, prior to, let's say, twenty twenty-five?
Uh, I wish Melkor was present? And they may be, uh, because I came in late, I am unaware? Mayor, did they?
They haven't participated in this.
Okay. Uh, they have been accumulating land in this area with anticipation of development? Uh, they've sunk some serious dollars in? Regrettably, I can't speak for them, I can only observe by their actions that I think? They had hoped that something would happen prior to twenty twenty-five? They've been amassing land in the area? I am approximating here for the last fifteen years?
Okay, so, so Melkor outside of that though? I'm sorry to interrupt, but, um, because I'm trying to get a handle on, I know when people amass land, they're not expecting development, um, immediately? Right? Um, most people aren't. And then I think that's the thing with, with developers that I, that I've talked to before is they're looking into the future? So I'm not sure that, that? And I know because when I, my time on MPC in the last seven years as well? Is that there, there's been no discussion about widespread development in that area, um, even seven years ago? So I'm just, I, I'm not sure where people have this, this idea that there's, um, they need to develop this right now? And I, I, I just need to understand better? Why you need to develop this land if it hasn't been developable? And if there's, there's no big push in general on putting, um, resources or services into the land?
Well, in creating the area structure plan some ten, twelve years ago? I think we created a false sense of expectation amongst us who are landowners? And now the, the land has been deemed to be commercial in its entirety? Some three hundred plus acres of developable land? And? We've come to the realization that that constitutes? In excess of a forty-year inventory of commercial land? And so we create the false expectation? And now we're in a situation ten, twelve years later? Where it looks like we've over, we've overreached again? Just like I feel to some degree? The city overreached fifty, sixty years ago when they annexed the land that I currently own? However, let me say, counselor, that, uh? Uh, that's not my prime contention, I just wanted to put some context? Around where I am at with this land? Uh, history is history, can't change it? And if I don't like the area structure plan the way it is? obviously there's some responsibility on my part to try to influence that to be changed. I think what's more at issue here at this point in time is my statement treating the goose and the gander the same. And so as you go about making this decision, I would ask that you be cognizant of the fact that there are others of us who see this as somewhat advantageous to this piece of land. We, we want that to happen. I want it to happen, that this land gets some economic use going forward. Uh, but I don't want it to prejudice my situation with my land in terms of not being able to access potentially. And I say potentially because I have no plans to do the same.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Yep. Counselor Carlson.
Thank you, Mayor Spurman. Um, I guess the question through you to Mr. Boylan or whoever can answer. Um, I guess some of the concern here is that the outline plan is eight, nine years out. Is that what I'm hearing?
So Counselor Carlson, often an outline plan uh, can be, usually takes two to three years to do an outline plan. So we do anticipate in the usual course of development that the outline plan is done first before the servicing then becomes available, right? And so um, there were some attempts uh, in the past to do an outline plan with the landowners and, and that has stalled. So um, again, we, we don't understand as, as to why. But um, yeah, it is the onus of the landowners to take on that job for doing the outline plan.
And so we don't know why, because I do recall that there have been attempts and they've always failed. And, and so I'm, I was hoping you would have some insight as to why if people are chomping at the bit, as we're hearing, to get some development done here, why why there is that hesitancy to move forward?
I don't know. I'm, I'm sure anything we would say would be very much conjecture at, at this point. And I'm not sure if Mr. Hawkins wants to add to that.
Yeah, because in turn, in terms of the dealings that the city's had with the, a, a couple of the prime landowners along the University Drive corridor. The, it, it would be safe to say that there's a couple of things at play. Uh, more than one landowner, an, an outline plan involves more than one landowner. So that, that creates some, some, some complications in terms of agreeing as private landowners on, on who's leading the planning process, that, that, those kinds of things, what that cost sharing looks like. Uh, that, that's been one of the things that we've heard. The other thing we've heard is that uh, is, is that, that, because of the designation, this is a employment area, a commercial area. Um, that is a, a specific market which is already being filled in other respects in the city. Um, whether that's in uh, in the crossings and those, those kinds of things on the west side, which are sort of the direct competitors. So market conditions are, are not just quite right for folks to actually undertake that planning work. But uh, those, again, I, that, that's what we've heard in some of the dialogue we've had. Um, but it has been all quiet for the last couple of years as, as far as moving to the next step, which is the outline plan, which is the, the landowner's obligation. In the absence of an outline plan, the development rights that they have today and the zoning they have today governs what they can do and, and how they can enjoy their property. Nothing is, even though we have an ASP in place, that in itself doesn't limit the, the, the current enjoyment and use of the property that's in, that's out in this area today.
Gotcha. Thank you. Um, just help me out here. The um, I think it was the southeast area structure plan. In my mind, it was a similar situation, many landowners. Someone took the lead?
So, so that, there's a history lesson there because that that in the, in the good old days, when I was a much younger man, that, that southeast area was called Windsor Park. Like way back. And again, uh, there was some attempt by land developers um, to assemble land and to get it to a point that, that uh, that, that there, it might be viable for future development. But there were huge servicing constraints, similar to, to Northwest Lethbridge that we have here, that, that made it difficult for, for it to go. Recognizing that those costs are the cost, servicing is the cost of the developer to, to bring it to a higher and better use is the, is an investment they need to make in order to develop and, and, and turn it into a different use. And we're, it took decades for that to get to a point and for the city growth in general to create the demand for both residential and commercial development in southeast. So um, it is not unusual in the, in the context and, and in the timeframes that Mr. Patzer has raised and in the context of what we see as far as development on the west side for it to take many, many years before the conditions are right. And uh, and land, the landowner situation is just right to start the actual, the next level of detailed planning, which is outline planning and ultimately, ultimately subdivision in this area. We're getting closer. I, I'm optimistic. But uh, but again, that, those are decisions that those private landowners that uh, and, and their risks to take, once they decide that the, the time is right.
Mr. Patzer would like to comment on the issue.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, some color on this conversation. I, as a property owner, starting approximately ten years ago when the area structure plan was put in place, worked very closely with Melkor. And Melkor encouraged that I be the voice for my neighbors in the area as we went about trying to go to the next step, which is the outline plan. So I'm intimately involved with the process. Approximately three, three and a half years ago, all the neighbors, and there are four of us that own significant-sized parcels along with Melkor, and understand that Melkor owns as much land as the four of us neighbors combined, came to an agreement that we would approach the city and apply for an area outline plan and that we would all digest our pro rata share of the costs. And I will tell you, we were within one week of being in the city hall, making that application. That's how close we were. But then the chief executive officers of Melkor were changed. And the new president and his executive staff put a stop, full stop on anything that had not already been started in order to reevaluate it. And that is where we have sat for three and a half years. I will say to you, because Melkor is such a big factor in this immediate area, as well as their expertise, uh, that I, as a neighbor, I am fully aware that unless they move forward with the next stage, uh, we are probably condemned to limbo land in terms of any significant development in this area. It requires that Melkor move forward. So that's the history and where we're at to today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. You were so, I don't know, Ms. Gearing, I thought had her hand up at one point, but perhaps it's, it's been answered now. Next question I had, um, I've got a couple, actually. Uh, maybe I'll ask Mr. Purvis um, a, a question that this, this piece of land, if I'm reading my package correctly, doesn't have legal access. You've talked about that you're thinking about that it may be possible to gain legal access to it. Are there other properties in this area that would be more appropriate? I think some of the concerns we're hearing is about uh, slowing down development, impacting infrastructure, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Are, are there any other properties in the area that have been looked at that you've thought, okay, this is the better place to go to?
We have not. Um, our client has bought this parcel for its future development potential. Um, they, the, um, that, at the beginning, I, I tried to, so that, that is their primary purpose is to develop this according to um, the area structure plan. Uh, when the, when the investment is made by the offsite fund that is collecting money now in order to extend those services into the new area, then, and they will be glad uh, to go ahead and develop the land. Until that time, this, this plan has been developed to be low service. Um, as per the original bylaw that counsel adopted in nineteen ninety-one, um, that appropriate uses for this parcel will not require sanitary sewer service, will not require water distribution, um, will be low-service, light industrial-type uses, such storage being one of the ones they mentioned. So that's been the goal is, uh, how, how do we develop this parcel with what we have without uh, i- impacting downstream neighbors or adding cost to the city? We think this plan could be, uh, can be, or this site can be developed through a development permit. Well, you're right, we, we won't have a land use process, but we'll have a development permit and uh, we work with development services all the time and always, would seem to always find a, a solution to these problems. Um, and so that, that is the plan. Just real quick on that, you, you raised the um, illegal access. There's sort of a goat trail that there now that's been, been shared. It's uh, it's through someone else's land, like I said. And so they would have to sit down and I work out a joint use agreement. A joint use agreement is very common on commercial properties where um, two developers may share an access. Similar to this.
Thank you for that. Uh, final question, if I can, I'll be quick. Your worship. Through uh, you to the Mr. Boylan or someone in planning or legal, I'm sure, there are no tools in our toolbox to say that this is an interim. I'd like to put a caveat on it, on a there's nothing we can do to say that once this outline plan goes forward, this shall be removed.
We, we can't approve it as a temporary use, Counselor Carlson, no.
It's just impossible.
And we can't put a caveat on the title either, so.
Okay, thank you for that. And further to that, approving this development, will, will that possibly slow down any outline plan? Uh, I'm just that, I guess one of my, my concerns or thoughts is that if we approve this and as, as the other presenter said, well, then we got to approve his, well, then we're never going to have a, an outline plan in this area is, is one of my concerns. Is that, is that something that should be in my head or no?
So Counselor Carlson, um, certainly I think it's fair to say from administration's point of view that allowing this particular parcel to have this exemption um, would perhaps open things up for other parcels to then come. And of course, counsel looks at everything um, on an individual basis. Um, but I think that is part of our hesitancy in this regard uh, to what would happen to the future and how we would assure that the actual intent of the Employment Center area structure plan um, stays intact. Right? So I, I realize it's a long time uh, from once you conceive something. I will mention in nineteen sixty-nine, uh, that's when the West Lethbridge uh, urbanization plan was done, which stated the crossings uh, in its location should be like the hub of the west side, and that was nineteen sixty-nine. So I mean, yes, it does take a long time for these things to build out. Um, but we do want to see employment here. Um, employment on the west side saves us from having everyone travel back to the other side of the river all the time, right? And so there, there are some really good um, basis for why the area structure plan is the way it is. And, and staff is being cautious. We do have some hesitancy here. Um, just because of the fact there's already a direct control zoning on it and yeah, we, we have less tools than we normally would have. And perhaps um, Director Hawkins would add to that as well.
So, so your question was, um, just so I, I, I'm tackling this right, Counselor Carlson, is if, if you were to approve what's before you, would that make things more difficult in terms of an outline plan? Of, 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 of the, of the necessary momentum of landowners to, to start to work on an outline plan?
That was thought in my head.
Our impression, our, our advice to you is it does. To what extent, it, it would be really hard for me to quantify that. But uh, moving from twenty percent to seventy-five percent interim use unserviced is, is, is without a doubt a constraint to the ultimate goal uh, established in the ASP. And, and that's why we're advising against the approval that's before you today. Now recognizing that, count, it's counsel's ASP. It's, it's a statutory document and counsel has every right to, 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 to place a different value on, on what's before you and, and amend accordingly. Um, but our, our recommendation is that, uh, that, that you should not proceed.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Spurman. Thank you for allowing me to leave. We'll jump back in to the queue.
Deputy Mayor Campbell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is for Mr. Purvis. What would be the, uh, should this fail to go forward? What would be the direct impact to your client at this time in the, in the short term?
In the short term, uh, they would, they would maintain the property as it sits today. As, as I said, it's sort of a, I mean, it, it doesn't hold, add a whole lot of aesthetic value to uh, the city of Lethbridge. It's uh, sort of what's left there. Um, a good-sized parcel for a commercial development, but at the current time, it's uh, I guess would be past your land. Uh, it's never been, I, I haven't noticed any um, animals on it. Uh, as I said, there's a house on there that I, I, I've not, I couldn't answer what their, their plans are specifically, but basically they would be left to maintain the property as it is for the next I don't know, eight to ten years.
What would be the, the greatest compromise that the city could give? Do you think?
We uh, struggled with, we were asked to put in a, a direct a specific ask about how we would change the setback and come up with it ourselves. It was a, it was a challenging thing in that, and that's uh, city staff doesn't support this application. And so why would they comment on what they do support? I think Mr. Boylan has commented that the uh, the standards as they are is, is, is what they're prepared to accept. My client uh, came up with twenty-five meters as a setback that's, that's realistic. It could potentially be more than that. But I, I'm not sure what sort, short of an amendment, um, I'm not sure what the process would be to, to land somewhere in the middle that uh, that might um, part of the issue is that they want to develop. If they're going to invest money, they, they want to do it enough of it so that um, there's sort of a return on it. Uh, whether that's, you know, importing CCAN trailers or whatever it is, um, that they have a return in this, in this next ten years. It has to be a return in the next ten years uh, before they, they rip it all out and, and develop the, the ultimate plan.
Appreciate the answer. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Spurman.
Okay, any further questions from counsel? Counselor Carlson.
Sorry, Mayor Spurman. I was trying to take my hand down because I think Counselor Campbell asked this very similar question. Is, is there, is there any compromise? Um, because I think the concerns raised uh, by administrat, or administration, I, I share some of those. The uh, the comments and desires raised by the applicant, I share some of those. Is, is there a, what is it, the King Solomon's decision? Is there any happy medium where a, a slightly larger development would not uh, impact future development? I, I'm just, I'm not sure. I'm not that, that person to make that call, but I'm wondering if, if those discussions have happened or if they could happen in future. And I don't know if anyone wants to jump up and answer that, more or less just pondering.
So what we found in the ASP was anything above, above about twenty percent. It starts to, it starts to impede future, future urban development there. We looked at a few other uses and they were, they were, or a few other interim type uses. And they were, they were in the neighborhood of about twelve point five percent, like the, the mint, the, the sea container mini storage facility, which is which is on thirtieth street west, near the city boundary, in the West Lethbridge Employment Center ASP two. And there's another one too, we looked at, it was around eight percent as well. So twenty percent was, was fairly generous for that, we felt, without impeding future development.
I'd just like to add that any, any development here, it just is an incremental increase to, to the friction towards putting together an outline plan. So in an ideal situation, you would have one landowner owning all the land and nothing on it at all. And then they could decide to do their own outline plan. But as we subdivide the land into smaller pieces and we invest more into it, then every one of those things creates a little bit more friction. So at some point, there's a tipping point, we don't know where it is. I think Tyson would say that when we considered twenty percent, it was already a compromise based on the things that were happening in the area already.
Counselor Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. Again, I'm split screening here. So I'm looking at section two point three point four of the West Lethbridge Employment Center Area Structure Plan. And I note that it says within this area, the direct control designation has been employed to allow the landowners to develop their properties with uses that were not dependent on municipal servicing or great deal of investment. We're still maintaining that objective. Are we not? Except that now I'm hearing you can't do it because there's a requirement for municipal servicing. Are we shifting off of that or are we still maintaining that original intent? I see Ms. Garing pop up.
So Counselor Kaufman, the DC designation is what helped Mr. Cook with the example Mr. Boylan shared earlier about his mini storage facility. That's the tool that we used in order to allow him to proceed. So DC bylaws have been used in agricultural areas throughout the city in order to allow them to subdivide farmsteads. We've used them in the southeast for some of the uses we have out there, such as churches, et cetera. And so it's, it's common for us to use the DC bylaw. I think what is interesting again in this case is the DC bylaw in place now is done in nineteen ninety-one. Right? And so that's just the difference here. So DC is still the tool we would use on any new applications if they were going to come forward.
Okay, thank you. Is, so yeah, nineteen ninety-one, so happy twentieth, thirtieth anniversary on that bylaw. Is that something we should maybe reevaluate prior to making these sort of one-off decisions? Is, is there, is there the potential for reevaluation? And again, the, the, the WLEC is also eight years old. We've been kind of tied up on, on, you know, this is, it says, it's coming down to a conversation about do we permit development for the sake of development or do we hang on for, for utopia? And I get that conversation. I think I'm starting to understand that, but are, are some of the barriers that we're looking at that are creating barriers, some of the fact that, that this is in itself an eight-year-old plan based on some assumptions on a thirty-year-old bylaw?
So Counselor Kaufman, sort of two sorts of things. You're speaking about the entire area structure plan and then you're speaking about this particular parcel. Right? And so in my experience, staff has never revisited someone's zoning, which confers development rights upon them. We've, we've never gone in and, and like we have some very old land use designations in the city and we have not ever gone back to reexamine them on a site-specific basis to ascertain if they are still relevant or not, right? Usually what happens is the applicant or the landowner wants to do something different from what their zoning allows them to do and, and then they approach us and then we work with them on that. In, in terms of the premise of the West Lethbridge Employment Center, we still feel the premise is, is still solid based on again, the idea that the west side doesn't have any employment areas. We don't have anywhere. It's mainly residential when you look at it and, and all that does is increase the traffic to the other side of the city. And so we still believe that premise is solid and, and as Mr. Hawkins stated, this is council's area structure plan though. And certainly staff takes direction from council in terms of if you want us to reexamine anything. So we're certainly able to do that part of it, but we've, we've never gone in and, and looked at someone's zoning in terms of a DC to, to say if it's still relevant or, or meets the needs, right? That's up to the landowner to do and, and certainly I would defer to legal counsel in this regard as well because they do have property rights associated with that bylaw.
Yeah, yeah. And sorry, thank you. And I appreciate that answer. And that was kind of on Counselor Carlson's tools in the toolbox question. So thank you for the clarification on that. Thank you, Mr. Spearman.
Okay, Counselor Morrow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I proceed with some questions, if, is it possible to put up the part of the presentation that was made where we see the parcel of land?
Okay, the pictures side by side, is that what you're looking for?
Sure, anything that shows the parcel of land. Yeah. So, so my question, I'll direct it, I'm assuming that Mr. Patsir is still in there in the chambers.
He is.
So I'll, I'll address it to Mr. Patsir and Mr. Purvis. I'm going to go back to ten after four. So I need to be clear. What, what is this zoned right now?
The question was to me or to staff?
Whoever. Well, maybe that should go to the city. What's the zoning right now?
So Counselor Morrow, the zoning right now, it's a direct control district that was zoned first in nineteen ninety-two. The bylaw states that the uses should be of a light industrial or highway commercial nature that, that require minimal sanitary sewers and generate low traffic volumes and are allowed as a discretionary use, meaning that it is not guaranteed as a right. The direct control bylaw also lists criteria for deciding on the development permit, which includes impact on natural drainage patterns, impact on utility services such as water and sewer, compatibility with surrounding land uses and scale of development. And most critically here is the relationship to the statutory plans affecting the area, which is where the change, where the proposed change to the West Lethbridge Employment Center ASP comes in, which is why we're doing that today.
Okay, thank you. So now my, my question to Mr. Purvis and Mr. Patsir, either one of you. So what I've, what I'm hearing is that there's no services. But yet you want to put something on this parcel of land. And Mr. Patsir, Mr. Purvis, you are representing your clients. Mr. Patsir, you indicated, or at least what I picked up, and I'm just looking for clarification, is that you support this, but you've said it a couple of times, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. So I'm, I'm, I'm guessing that you have an interest in, in, in what happens here with your parcel of land. So my question to either one of you two, I need to know more information of what exactly, I guess to Mr. Purvis, what exactly is the intent? For how long? Like, I need that to be clear in my mind. Like, what are you attempting to do when there are no services? The city is obviously not, not supporting your proposal. So can you maybe comment on that? And for Mr. Patsir, so you can think about it. I really want to know more about your involvement with Malkor and you said that you've worked on, I think you said the area structure plan. I want, I want you to be a little bit more specific and detailed on that, if you can. So either one of you first, Mr. Purvis, I guess.
Thank you, Counselor Morrow. So the client, my client would like to, I mean, it's sort of a generality, develop some mini storage or self-storage on the site. I guess the way that they would like to do that is with, with either containers or with buildings, steel buildings that can be easily disassembled and, and moved. So as far as timing on how, how long this would occur, it, it really depends on the, some of these overall issues that are, that are ongoing with the area structure plan area is when will an outline plan be put in place that covers this land? And considering it's, it's not ju, my applicant would probably do it tomorrow, but it requires the, the cooperation of many landowners. And then it also requires services to be extended to the property because without that, there, there's no way on earth this is ever going to get supported to be developed. So so when those two things happen, which as we know right now, it's, it's, it's around twenty twenty-nine. And if presuming that the outline plan occurs in that timeframe, then full development would happen and they would give notice, I guess, to customers and remove the self-storage or, or move the self-storage to, to another location and, and set up there. Really is, it was just sort of, it's sort of the type of structure is similar to what's there. If you go further up Northland University Drive, there's there's sand storage, there's, there's steel structures that are of a storage nature that have been developed. And so this, this was sort of asking if we could do the same thing.
Sorry, and you would access this property by the road that comes to a dead end there where the residence is?
Yes, and that's the shared access agreement that we would have to get in place first, but yes, that's the road we would use for access.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Patsir, I'd like to hear from you because you indicated you have been working on this for years with Malkor and you talked about landowners in the area. So can you maybe just expand on that a little bit and, and tell me? Tell me more about what you know and what you want us to really consider.
Thank you, Counselor. I appreciate the opportunity to speak again. Being late, I was not privy to this particular diagram. I want to repeat that I don't stand in opposition to this undertaking. But now having seen this diagram and now understanding what the ultimate purpose of this land is, at least the short-term purpose, I would hope that if this goes forward, that the city would require the owner of the property in proceeding with the storage to put up some sort of visible barrier between University Drive and the area that they hope to use. If for no other reason than this is the gateway into West Lethbridge currently. And it would be nice that that remains looking neat and tidy. Having said that, having said that, more in addressing your, your question, I would hope council would allow for any development to take place there that is of a temporary nature. I really believe in free markets. If, if, if you allow this to proceed as a storage area and we get to the point where an area outline plan is to be considered, I cannot see how this particular owner of this facility would not want that to go forward because they would want to get the highest and best use out of the value of that land. And so I, I see this as being dismantled, as long as it's only allowed to be built on a temporary basis, to facilitate whatever the outline plan would encourage. And so to restrict an owner from a temporary use that obviously can be dismantled quite easily if the economics dictate that that will then have more value, I don't see that as being problematic. Either for myself or for this current developer. I think we need to move to a situation where we can allow the highest and best use of land as it currently exists without impinging on future development plans. I'm not sure I'm answering your question. Please reconstruct question if I'm not.
No, you have. I just wanted maybe you to just expand a little bit more on your work or involvement with Malkor and whoever else regarding, regarding the development or the area structure plan of that area. Because I thought I said, I thought I heard you say something about you got together, you did something and within a week you came to City Hall and I, I'd just like some clarity on that.
On the east side of University Drive, there are five significantly sized parcels. The city owns one of them where you currently have your bit of an equipment depot and snow storage area. And then there are four others. The four of us, together with Malkor, would have liked to have seen the outline plan put in place. I'm going back three and a half, four years ago. But the economics of the time were frustrating, particularly for Malkor. I think that, that when they had amassed this land on the one side of University Drive, they had somewhat of a vision of big box stores. And I think we're all aware that the big box concept is dying a slow death. And as a result, they've now amassed some land and I don't think they quite know what to do with it. And until they decide what they're going to do with it, I am quite convinced that because of the limited resources of the four of us who have the other significant parcels, we're condemned to limbo land because we don't have the resources to move an outline plan forward. With Malkor, we did. And so this land sits in limbo and it, from where I sit as an owner, I don't envision that anything's going to happen of any consequence for the next ten years. I hope I'm wrong. But to put chains on us, handcuffs on us for potentially the next ten years, it's a little unfair. Simply because we had a vision ten, twelve years ago that seems to be no longer able to move forward with. I have heard rumors even, I can't substantiate them, that the planning department of the city is second guessing itself on making University Drive the gateway into the city. If there's any substance to those rumors, then this whole area employment center development plan around University Drive is a, a real catastrophe because you've landlocked us as owners into a plan that potentially you don't want to see come to fruition. And I've heard the reason why we don't, the rumor that we don't want to have this as the gateway into West Lethbridge is that it is problematic in traffic patterns around the highway. And, and the potential problems that coming off and on the highway in that location would create. This is not my place to ask that unsubstantiated rumors be confirmed. But I will come back to my original contention. It doesn't look like anything's happening here for a long time. And to put handcuffs on us as owners with the anticipation that this plan created ten, twelve years ago, that now is having some potential problems in terms of concept is really unfair to all. having some potential problems in terms of concept is really unfair to all involved. Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you, Mr. Patcher.
Thank you both.
When 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 Counselor Morrow's finished, I also would like to have a follow-up question to you. But Counselor Morrow, continue.
I'm done, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Patcher, if you could come back to the microphone, please. It's, we are diverting from the specific application, but I have to ask you one question. Why not get together with approach Melkor? They've had a few years. They have, the new leadership is in place. Why not reapply?
I have reached out to the local Melkor representative, who incidentally is a new face on Melkor. His name is Perry Newfelt.
You know him? Yep.
He replaced, and I'm can't put my hand on his name. But the gentleman he replaced seemed to be far more engaged, whether that was by personality or by ability to access the leadership of the corporation that he represents.
There is a potential to move forward. Yeah, okay.
And so I have approached Mr. Newfelt. And and he says, simply, sorry, they're they're not interested in discussing it. I was actually very surprised that when this particular parcel of land in question that we are referencing came up for sale, that Melkor did not snap it up because it would have consolidated significantly their entire landholding on that side of University Drive. And it is, in my mind, the critical puzzle piece in developing the rest of their land. I I can't speak for Melkor. I don't know.
I just wanted a quick question.
Point of order, we're
We are diverting. We are diverting. I just needed a quick answer. Thank you, Counselor Miyashiro. I know we want to be fair to the applicant, but the issue has come up. Why hasn't this moved forward until now? I just wanted to get an answer to that question.
Well, it'd be great if we based our conversation on facts, not speculation.
Yeah, just wondering if there was any attempt to re get this thing moving forward because what we would want is everybody moving forward with a design that meets city expectations. And out of frustration, that's not happening, is what I'm reading into this. But I wondered to see if there was any potential of it ever happening. Doesn't appear that there is. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Purvis, is that your understanding as well? That it'll be a long time before an an area structure plan is in place? And that's why this application is coming forward in the form that it is?
Yes, I this sort of discussion supports our assessment originally that it's not going to be easily. The next phases of planning are in this, in this, within this ASP are not easily done. It will take a lot of work and a lot of time. In addition to that, the finances aren't there to to fund infrastructure extensions for a number of years, maybe a decade. So it seemed like a long period of time to sit with that parcel when when there could potentially be a better use for 10 years.
And and I'm sympathetic to your client's desire to develop the land and but the client also bought the land eyes wide open as well, right? Knowing that there were some significant challenges to development. Is that correct?
Yeah, they're they bought the land eyes wide open. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions from council? I see none. Hearing none. I now declare the public hearing closed. This matter may be decided later this afternoon, following the public hearing. Okay, we're going to go back to the council meeting. Okay, we're back in the city council meeting. Okay. Okay, is there anyone who wishes to to sponsor bylaw 6277? Amendment to bylaw 5798, the West Lethbridge Employment Center Area Structure Plan? So if you support the applicant, somebody would like to sponsor this motion?
I will. Joe.
Okay, Counselor Morrow, thank you. Okay, bylaw 6277, amendment to bylaw 5798, the West Lethbridge Employment Center Area Structure Plan for second reading. Be it resolved that bylaw 6277 be approved, moved by Counselor Morrow.
I'll open it up for questions.
Okay, are there any questions from council? No, there are no questions. We will move to debate.
Well, you know, after listening to what was going on, listening to the presenters, listening to the city, it seems to me that there was a comment made by, I think it was Mr. Patcher, where he indicated that we are handcuffing landowners. From what what we were told is that this is a temporary project. They are fully aware of the situation. They're fully aware that they have no no city services. They understand that. They have explained to me specifically when I asked the question of how they would access this property. They seem to be more than willing to be a part of the future development of this area, whether it's 20, 29, or whatever the year was said, or 10 years from now, or 20 years from now. And so that's kind of what stuck with my mind is that there is no reason that we should handcuff them. Plus the fact that whether the number is accurate or not, that it'll generate some tax revenue for the city of Lethbridge. And although it's not my favorite thing, because as we know, this is the gateway to West Lethbridge. But there's nothing there right now. There's nothing in any of that area right now. And so if 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 they know going into this that that they're kind of on their own and doing their own thing until plans are made for this area, I kind of am leaning more towards letting them proceed with this with this project, with this development. So I'll call for the question.
Okay, question has been called. I think we'll do a roll call vote.
Mayor Spearman, is there opportunity for debate or?
Sure, I thought nobody wanted to speak. Okay, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you ask already? We just moved straight to a closing?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you did ask for debate.
Yeah, okay.
No, you did. No, you did questions. You did not do debate.
Well, I did move to debate and Counselor Morrow opened, and it seemed like nobody was in the queue. So but we can certainly, I'll consider that Counselor Morrow's opening. And if councils would like to debate, go ahead, please. Counselor Kaufman.
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. This one has been a challenge in pre-reading for the meeting. There seemed to be some certainty in there. However, obviously, the conversation during the meeting has meandered through a number of things. I am concerned about invoking the names of organizations and, more importantly, individuals in our community without them being present to express their own their own position on matters. That aside, I'm I'm very challenged by the fact that we, that understanding Ms. Gearing's statement and the reality that the the DC bylaw was established in 1991 and going back in and reevaluating is not a normal process. But hearing from the neighbors, hearing from the applicant certainly, and some of those in the area. For as much as I would like it just to go ahead, I recognize that this is the quote-unquote gateway to the city of Lethbridge. I I think I'm I'm leaning at the moment on not accepting the amendment for feeding the amendment. But I would strongly encourage that that we start heading back down the roadway of having a conversation about this property, reevaluating the West Lethbridge Employment Center ASP, talking to neighbors and looking at, maybe there is something that we as the municipality need to be doing to facilitate a different conversation with what's going on there. Maybe there is potential now. There needs to be a demonstrated leadership somewhere. And perhaps it needs to start with us, the leaders of the community, to initiate to initiate conversations, to get things re-kickstarted or at least reevaluated in that neighborhood. So, well, I would like to see development occur there as well. I recognize the long-term vision of what has been proposed, so I won't support the amendment.
Okay, Acting Mayor Crowson?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. This has been a fascinating debate because it became so much more philosophical than I think any of us thought it would become when this was on the agenda. And as Counselor Kaufman said, there is a lot here to unpack. We're looking at, you know, the landowner's rights versus the community rights. Is that vision that was created through the community of more value than the vision that the individuals have for their land? And is something that is temporary, how temporary is temporary? Especially as Counselor Kaufman said, when you are developing on the gateway to West Lethbridge. And if we do permit this, as noted, if we do it for one, do we have to do it for everybody? Or is that prejudicial if we don't? How do we balance good planning with the ability of the landowner to do what they need to in the financial situation at the time? Yeah, this has become quite a fascinating debate as we've been going through this. I'm going to echo some of what Counselor Kaufman said. Something needs to be done here. There needs to be change here. But I don't know if this one eye change is the proper way of doing it. And so the conversation needs to continue. I would be voting against this because, you know, we create the NDP, we create area structure plans, we create all these things. And we have to, in some ways, stand behind them because there is a vision and a thought process that goes into it. But when they do get to a certain age and maybe they don't work, we do have to have something that is guaranteed to start the process up again. And I'm hoping this is the Kickstarter to restart that process. So while I'm seeing this today as we'll vote against this, I'm hoping this is the Kickstarter to start those conversations.
Thank you, Counselor Carlson.
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. Counselor or Acting Mayor Crowson and Counselor Kaufman have ticked off most of the points I was going to raise. I am hopeful that this is the impetus towards moving towards an outline plan. I think it's 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 apparent to me that many of the folks in the area want to get there. I do too. I think when you've got a vision, when you've got long-term planning for an area, a counselor gets accused all the time of not having vision, not having planning and doing one-offs. And I think when we've we've got something, I think it's incumbent on us to to see it through. I hope we can we can get there sooner rather than later because I agree, it would be nice to see this area start developing as it's intended. My concern, even though I understand the the desires of the landowners, my concern is that if council starts approving one-off after one-off after one-off, we are never going to see the fruition of the long-term vision and plan for this area. So while I do commiserate, I do hope this is an impetus to move forward. But I won't be able to support this at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Higgin. Did you have your hand up?
I did, but it's already, I've already, many of the questions or debate is already done, so I'm fine, fine.
Okay, thank you. I did find it interesting as well. I'm the way I see it, there does need to be a major property owner on board for this all to move forward. And I see the frustration of other property owners. And I am concerned about moving forward on an individual basis and the precedents that may set and the expectations that may set and the complications down the road the city will ultimately have in bringing everything up to the standard that we expect of development and developers. One of the big, one of the big obstacles to overcome is putting up the money to get this, the infrastructure done, the off-site levies that would result. And that's that's a huge challenge. So very, very difficult to think at the end, knowing the landowner purchased the land, eyes wide open. The newest landowner to the party, it would be unfair to the others to allow an exception. So for that reason, I can't support the bylaw in this specific case. And I do hope that turning this down will be the impetus for the landowners to work together to advance the development of this land sooner than later. Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak in debate? I'll ask Counselor Morrow to close, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some of my colleagues, and I don't have to name who you are, but you'll know who you are when I talk about moving forward without a plan in the whole southeast area of South Lethbridge, where Walmart and Costco and all that stands there. We had no plan for that. We had no plan. Back in the day, the municipal development plan, it clearly even stated then not to move forward with the development there. So if we're talking about setting precedent, it was set 20 years ago or 30 years ago, whenever, 20 years ago, whenever that happened. There was no plans. We did many, many one-offs. And as soon as one one business moved in there, all of a sudden it started to take over, and we developed what's there now. Then we realized, because we had put the cart before the horse, we realized that we had to put a bunch of infrastructure in place to handle that. And my two colleagues will know when I mention we put one toilet and we're in trouble. You will recall that conversation that we were all a part of back in that in that day. So we're not setting precedent. What we're doing is, I hope I see this as a move to create and expand and hopefully develop and do it quicker than we anticipate with the existing landowners, working with the landowners, where we can develop that that area. That is the gateway to West Lethbridge. And right now, it's not very nice. Will this make it better? Maybe not. But it might be the stimulus that just might get other landowners to start thinking, hey, we need to do this. And it might make future council realize that maybe instead of investing in infrastructure in many other places, that maybe this should be something that is considered. So we can do this. The landowners, from what we heard today, are totally understanding. They totally understand and get the way this game is played. They're fully aware. All they want to do is put something in there on an interim basis. And I don't see any reason, as was stated, why we, the nine of us here, are going to handcuff developers, landowners, from trying to move forward with with projects that they believe will be a benefit. So I'll call for the question. So I'll call for the question.
Okay, question has been called, we'll do a roll call vote.
Counselor Moro?
In favor.
Counselor Miyashiro?
Opposed.
Counselor Parker?
In favor.
Acting Mayor Croson?
Opposed.
Deputy Mayor Campbell?
Opposed.
Mayor Spearman?
Opposed.
Counselor Carlson?
Opposed.
Counselor Kaufman?
Opposed.
Counselor Higgin?
In favor.
Three to six, that's lost.
Okay, we don't need to go to third reading then. We'll now go to bylaw 6279. I need a mover for this, this is the designation of the Lance residence at 721 Third Street South Lethbridge as a municipal historic resource. Acting Mayor Croson, would you like to?
Sure, I'll take this one.
Thank you.
So by process, this has been through Historic Places Advisory Committee, and they are recommending, and it has also gone on to the Standing Policy Committee, and there's a recommendation from the Standing Policy Committee as well. And so what this bylaw is looking to do is to designate as a municipal historic resource, 721 Third Street South. The design of this house is actually quite common for its time period, it's a square, four-square design, but what makes this a rather unusual residence, it's constructed with concrete blocks and not in wood or brick as you might normally see in southern Alberta. The house is built in 1909, and the history has been provided as well. And so based on the recommendations from HPAK and from the community and social SPC, this is recommended for designation. And unless there's any questions, I will call the question.
Okay, are there any questions for Counselor Croson? There are none. I'll consider that Counselor Croson's opening. Is there any debate?
Yes, Mayor Spearman, Counselor Kaufman?
Go ahead.
Thank you, I will happily support this particular bylaw, I've had the pleasure of being in that house, and it is absolutely unique, I've not seen anything like it, definitely here in southern Alberta, and having been in a couple of places in this world, I've not seen anything like it anywhere else either. So it's a, it's a structure, it's a form that does definitely need to be preserved in our community, and I would encourage members of council to consider its uniqueness and to act accordingly, support the bylaw, thank you.
Do any other members of council wish to debate? I too will support this bylaw. Counselor Croson, would you like to close?
I'll call the question.
Question has been called. All in favor? Are any opposed? It's unanimous? Okay, we'll move to third reading. From Counselor Croson, be resolved that bylaw 6279, a bylaw to designate the Lance property of 721 Third Street South Lethbridge as a municipal historic resource, be given third reading, and the mayor and the city clerk be authorized to sign and seal the same. Counselor Croson?
Question.
Question's been called, all in favor? Are any opposed? There are none, thank you. Okay, there were no written inquiries prior to the meeting. Are there any updates? Committee updates to council? Okay, if that's the case, we've got two items on the in-camera agenda to deal with. Can I have a motion to go in camera, please? So moved by Deputy Mayor Campbell, all in favor? Okay, if we can close up the room.